Commission hearing, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning, Mrs. Oplund. Can you give us the TV coverage announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Good morning to you, Ms. Black. How about today's agenda status?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We have one consent item on from last week this morning, and four regular items. And I believe we're ready to move forward in discussing all of those. I think at least one or two items may ultimately be continued, but we'll get to that as the items come up.
Okay. And can we look at the projection report?
Yes, certainly. So, Mr. Chair, this is our last meeting of 2008 today, and we will be meeting again in January, on January 21st, in Santa Barbara. So that'll be our first hearing for the year. And it's already projected to be six hours. We also have a hearing on January 28th that's projected to be six hours at this point. We'll obviously keep an eye on the agendas, and we'll let the Commission know if we need to schedule an additional meeting to take care of the needs of the department in January. Right now, I don't anticipate that, but we'll see how things progress. Just a reminder, we will be participating in a furlough at the county, and will not be available to our customers except on an emergency basis for the last two weeks in December. And next year, your Commission will be, except for the month of January, will be meeting the first three Wednesdays of the month, the first Wednesday in Santa Barbara, the second Wednesday in Santa Maria, and the third Wednesday in Santa Barbara. Montecito Planning Commission will be meeting on the fourth Wednesday of the month. And I think that'll provide a little bit more evenly spaced out hearing schedule for the North and South County items, and provide the Commission with the ability to maybe take a little bit more vacation time in the year, as you can combine that fourth Wednesday with fifth Wednesdays that occur throughout the year.
Four times.
Yes, four times.
Okay. Any questions regarding the projection report, Commissioner Blau?
No.
Okay. At this point, we'll open up for public comment on items not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, don't all charge at once. Give a speaker slip. And Commissioner Brown, do we have a speaker slip? All right, then we'll bring it back for Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Do any of my colleagues have an informational report? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I wanted to just use a recent Court of Appeal opinion as an example of actions in which the Planning Commissions are involved and give a report with regard to the Westmont appeal, which was decided last week by the Second District Court of Appeal. And I'm pleased to say, after reading this opinion carefully, that our own Deputy County Counsel, Rachel Van Mullum, who was instrumental in the briefing and arguing of this appeal, did a great job, and the county was entirely successful in a unanimous opinion. The court upheld the Superior Court's rejection of environmental claims raised under SEQA with regard to the county's review of the Westmont project. I won't go through the claims here, but suffice to say, it's the kind of things that we deal with every day in terms of reviewing our projects. And recent projects that this Commission has been involved in, such as the Santa Barbara Ranch project, certainly involve the same kinds of issues. And it's interesting to me, and I think to all of us, to see these decisions that we make and agonize over frequently as to what the level of environmental review should be, and how to enhance it during our hearings, actually carried forward and discussed by justices in the higher courts as to whether the county was adequately informed before making its decision. So I commend this opinion to you. It was not ordered for publication because it is very unique to the facts of the case, but I have a copy and would be glad to share it with any of my fellow members.
Okay. Any other Commissioner? I have just one. Yesterday, I received a phone call from Supervisor-Elect Farr, who informs me she has made a selection for the going-forward Third District Planning Commissioner, and she will be making that announcement. So I will just say, at this juncture, it's been a pleasure and a privilege, and thank you for putting up with me. And I hope that she, that the replacement gets the same level of hazing that I did from all of you. With that, we can go to any divisional briefings from Planning and Development?
Mr. Chair, at your last meeting, the Commission requested a status report on Orchid Village Marketplace and the Evergreen Shopping Centers, Center projects, and Mr. Lozorovich will do that this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. With regards to the Orchid Marketplace, as you may recall, you approved that project last April. Shortly after it was appealed by the Orchid Area Advisory Group, your decision, that appeal was ultimately withdrawn by the appellant. And in August, the applicant submitted their application to go forward with finalizing their map. The application lacked quite a bit of information, so we're still waiting for some more submittals from them. I spoke with the applicant's agent last week, and they indicated to me that they're still very much committed in going forward with the project. Part of their slowdown in proceeding is just the result of the economy. I think they're trying to, according to the agent, secure financing to go forward with the project by spring of next year. And then I think they'd like to follow that up with getting their zoning clearance and land use permit entitlements later in 2009 and going forward. With regards to some tenants, they still have a commitment, at least right now, from Spencer's Grocery Store to move into and open a new grocery store in that center. They're still looking to get a tenant, possibly for a high-end hotel. They didn't indicate from who, but they did indicate some kind of high-end one. As you know, you did approve a hotel with that project. And they're still looking for a major chain, I think Pharmacy, to go into one of the buildings as well. There's been names thrown around, but they don't have anybody committed yet. And so I think they're still, again, with the economy, I think some people are just a little hesitant in signing commitments for leases, but they're still committed. They wanted to reiterate several times that they're still strongly committed to going forward with the project. And so that's what's kind of going on with the marketplace. With regards to the Evergreen Shopping Center, another shopping center remodel, essentially, that you guys approved last spring, March, recently, they received their application to begin demolition of some of the existing structures on the northern portion of the project site. If you recall, they split the center into two phases, the northern phase, or Phase 1, I guess is the northern phase, the second, the southern structures would be Phase 2. They're strongly going forward with at least Phase 1 right now. About a couple of weeks ago, we received applications also for a zoning clearance and a land use permit to allow them to go forward with grading and begin construction of the two buildings on the northern portion of the site. They would be Buildings A and B. One was identified as a bank, and another one was an office, kind of office on a second level, retail on the first level. And so they've indicated to me that they'd like to begin demolition activities probably around the first of the year. That takes a couple of weeks, followed by their grading of the site, regrading of the site, and then begin construction probably maybe in February or so, a couple of weeks of grading activities. The site obviously is relatively level as it is. So construction of the first two buildings would probably take the first, probably most of 2009 to complete. And then if they have those two buildings filled with tenants, then they proceed on with the second phase. Several of the existing tenants have indicated that they would like to relocate to the new phase, so that's good news for them. And they're going to continue to search for additional tenants. In addition, if you recall, there's that frontage road, Orchid Road, that goes kind of between the center and Highway 135. They've come back to the County Public Works Department and asked for requests to abandon that portion of the road in front of the site. Public Works has indicated support for that, but it's going to take its own separate process. They indicated maybe six to eight months in that endeavor as well. But they're going forward with looking into that as well. That pretty much concludes my briefing on those two.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I had asked for that briefing, and thank you very much. Very good briefing.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, just a comment. I was going to do this when Mr. Baker makes his report, but I was really impressed yesterday when I watched the board meeting, and Mr. Baker got up and kind of defended staff and the procedures that you're following now, trying to set schedules with applicants and with your staff, and hold everybody's feet to the fire. And I thought that was a great explanation, and I'm glad that we're doing that. I remember when I first came on the Commission, that was one of my concerns and problems. In fact, one of the first things I saw was a lot line adjustment that was four and a half years in the processing. I never understood how you do a lot line adjustment, take four and a half years to do it. So I compliment you on trying to make this county user-friendly when it comes to those kind of issues. But I'm a little concerned when I hear it would take, you know, six or eight months to do that road abandonment. I mean, that was an idea that I sort of put out there when we looked at that project to begin with. And I would hope that, I would be concerned that taking six to eight months to complete that would actually help delay the project at Evergreen. So if there was something the county could do to shorten that process, I'd be very grateful to see that happen. But again, I want to compliment the staff on, at least from, this is coming up for my anniversary of the second year, and I'm happier with the fact I'm getting, when I'm seeing these projects come before us, they're not three and four and five years for simple projects. They're done much quicker. So if there's anything to, you know, to why it takes so long for abandonment of that road, because it's in everybody's interest, especially the county. I mean, we lose the maintenance cost of it, we gain the additional property tax revenue, and quite frankly, that road, the way it sits now, and the way the fences and the way between Caltrans and the road is ugly. And by getting rid of that, we really have a nice project and a nice, something to look at as you're traveling down South Broadway, so.
Okay. Any other questions for our divisional briefing? Otherwise, good morning, Mr. Baker. You've been prefaced.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'll go to the last one first that you just mentioned, Commissioner Blau. And not so much the road abandonment itself, but I'm just, what we're seeing is that, and actually what John just said, is that there's, project applicants are slowing down. So I mean, there may be times that they are, we set up a schedule some time back, and then they're slowing it down because of the economy. I mean, everything, I get up very early in the morning, and I watch the CNN News, and it really is disturbing each morning that what I'm hearing about the economy, I mean, it doesn't seem to be getting better. It seems to be going the other way in the turnaround. So I mean, that's, and we're experiencing that same thing in terms of the applications coming in. But I will talk with Scott McGalpin about the road abandonment itself. I mean, that's something that, if we can speed it up, we will. Just to report on items from yesterday, one of the agenda items on the A Agenda was the local coastal program, which was the submission of a number of things, a number of which were as a result of this Commission taking actions, and a number of them regarding Santa Barbara Ranch. And those were approved for forwarding to the Coastal Commission. Secondly, we had, Santa Barbara Ranch was back on. We needed to do some clarifications of the documents that we had submitted, and they were called out by the Coastal Commission. And so we made a number of corrections and clarifications so that they can be processed by the Coastal Commission. So those were approved. Couple of items coming next week that I just pointed out, there's going to be a presentation on AB 32, SBS 375, et cetera, the greenhouse gas stuff that's going to be on the board agenda next Tuesday. So if you are looking for something that might be of interest to you, I would suggest that you might want to tune into the board meeting next week. And also, the housing element item that was on yesterday was continued so that it could be heard here. When we originally scheduled it, it was to be in Santa Barbara, because there wasn't a meeting on the next Tuesday, the 16th, but now there is a meeting. So it will be heard up here, and that's the decision in terms of what we put forward to HCD as our properties, our parcels for the housing element. And lastly, even though it wasn't yours, we had quite a long hearing yesterday. If you didn't tune in on Miramar Hotel, that's the Montecito Planning Commission, but some good exchange and information with regard to that project, but it was finally approved also for going forward. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer, or Diane can answer stuff about Santa Barbara Ranch much better than I.
Okay. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Baker, were there any changes made to the Miramar project, or conditions added or changed?
No, there were no changes from what was submitted to them.
Okay. And on Santa Barbara Ranch, it was just clarifying or adding material to, in response to the Coastal Commission's letter?
Yeah, there were no changes to the conditions and what had already been approved by the board previously.
Okay. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments about that. I want to first congratulate Diane for being both a liar and a hero yesterday in the meeting. But I want to particularly compliment Commissioner, I mean, for Supervisor Gray, for her defense of the staff, and for her, I would call it, doing a little chewing out of a couple of the applicants that were a little bit out of line with their comments about the staff's character, I think would be the, character assassination, I should say. So I just want to compliment Commissioner Gray for the comments she made yesterday. They were very appropriate.
I would probably reiterate, though, there were also defenders in the public who also were timely and contributed to a positive dialogue as well. And I'm glad to see that we didn't just continue to bite the bullet and take it when some of that stuff is out of bounds and inappropriate. Okay, with that, I realize I failed in my hazing and did not give the cellphone admonition, so it took a year and a half, and I still, even the last one, couldn't get it. But please disconnect your cellphone or put it on vibrate so that I'm certain my replacement will be tasked with that pleasurable reminder. With that, I believe we're ready to go to our conceptual review item. Is that correct?
Consent item.
Consent item. And would you give us the structural, what we need to, how we need to proceed?
Mr. Chair, normally consent items, we ask if anybody would like to pull it from the agenda. And I believe because of the lateness of material, this might be one that I want to recommend, we just go ahead and pull and have Alex provide an explanation as to the material that's before you. And then we'll take public comment and any questions from the Commission. But first, we'll have Jessica read it into the record.
Okay.
The following is the hearing on the request of Jeff Nelson to consider the following: A 07 TRM-5, application filed on July 31, 2007; B 07 DVP-31, application filed on July 31, 2007; and to approve the negative declaration 0A NGD-20 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay. I see Mr. Tuttle is in Santa Barbara, and looks prepared. So why don't we go ahead and begin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Greetings from Santa Barbara. You received a couple of submittals, just a couple of documents this morning, under your direction from your last meeting, which was held here on 12/3/08. At that hearing, you directed staff to prepare some revised condition language to address some of the comments you had had at that meeting, primarily relating to landscaping, lighting, the gate within the community, and maintenance, lifetime maintenance of some of the drainage features. So to that end, we've prepared several revisions to conditions, and I can just walk through those with you if that would be most helpful. The first is Condition 1, which is the project description. And to address the issue of gates within the community, I added a statement within the description to state, "The residential development will not be a gated community." It's simple, to the point, and if that addresses your concerns adequately, I think we can go from there.
Commissioner Cooney has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, Mr. Tuttle, just wonder if the project description statement that you've added is sufficient notice to the project developer and subsequent owners that the installation of a gate blocking the access road would involve subsequent review by this Commission. I know you have repeated it in two places as a statement that it will not be a gated community, but I just wonder if the language shouldn't be stated affirmatively that the project is conditioned on not being gated. If I'm being too technical, it's only because in my neighborhood, gates have been sprouting regularly, even on projects where they were not contemplated originally.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, we could certainly add additional language. The project description carries as much weight as any additional condition that you put in a project that follow. And if someone, if a future landowner or a future applicant wanted to come in and put gates in, that would require a change to the permit to allow that in order to conform with the project description. We could certainly, again, add an additional condition to that effect, but I do believe that a simple statement in the project description does carry the weight that would require such review in the future.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tuttle, could you tell me the entry unit, number seven, I think it was, I see it here still, floor area, 930 square feet. You didn't change that? We had requested that that be changed to 1200 square feet?
No, the motion was for that square footage, which was approved by the Commission.
930?
Yes, the original, as submitted by the applicant. Correct.
Oh, I thought we had changed it to 1200. No?
No.
Now, Commissioner Brown, do you have a question on the gate portion?
Yeah, I do.
Because I know he has a presentation.
Right.
So, okay.
My concern is, it's along the line of Commissioner Cooney's, is that by putting in the conditions, when the Homeowners Association gets up and running, they won't be looking at the conditions. They'll be looking at some of their documentation. And there will be nothing that they see, or they probably won't even refer to, that would alert them that they can't put up a gate. And to make it easier for the community, should the community wish to, I realize all this is complaint-driven, but I would like to make it really clear, and perhaps if there is insulit-- I'm not sure how to do it in the positive rather than, and perhaps Commissioner Blau is ready to tell us how to do that.
Well, I think I share maybe some of the same concern that Commissioner Cooney had with the actual language. It seems to me that that sentence should read that, that there will not be a gated community without, and just add the word "without," approval from the Planning Commission by revising the map, PD, or whatever you want to do. The problem is, is that I wouldn't necessarily oppose a gate if it were located correctly, had the right stacking room, was in, you know, it wasn't a, the point is, I don't think we can make a statement that there will be no gated community, which we should say that there cannot be a gate installed without prior approval from the Planning Commission. So if they come to us in two or three years and have a design that you could approve, you should be able to look at it or deny it, as the case may be. I'm just concerned you don't make statements where you can't have this.
I think the issue for me was that we don't have neighborhoods that have gates in them, that sort of separate them visually from the rest of the community. That's the issue. It's not, it has nothing to do with security. It's the appearance that somehow that this neighborhood is being setting itself apart from the rest of the neighborhood. That's my issue. Now, if they want to put a gate way back, if it's to prevent rabble-rousers from coming in, they can do that. But, you know, we don't have that in our, I mean, nowhere is there any community in anyone that even Mr. Nelson has done that has a gate that prevents people from coming in, in that particular area. So it just doesn't, it's not that kind of area where you would have a gate. And I think it sends the wrong message anyway. It says, well, we want to stand apart rather than blend in. And that's my issue. Now, if you wanted to do it someplace further up where you couldn't see it, but I think it's easier just not to have any. Oh, I guess the Hoogan Project is gated, but that's already gated. That already has a gate. So it's not any change. But this is a fairly prominent entrance on Patterson, and I think it's important to be compatible with the neighborhood. It's not an issue of security. There's, we don't have those issues. So however, I think it would be important that if they want to do it, they're going to have to come back. I think that may be the thing.
Before I go to Commissioner Valencia, I have a question. A gate and a gated community are two distinctly different concepts for me. And if I followed the dialogue, it was no gate. Gated community and the preclusion or the suggestion that that can be done at a lesser date, to me embodies a whole host of amenities that accompany a gated community, which I didn't think we were dealing with. I thought we were dealing with a gate.
So what does that, I don't even know what it means. What is a gate? I mean, to me, it's just a gate in front of a, maybe there's--
Mr. Chair, if I could just suggest some language, I think we can get to the solution. As we decided last week, and we'll be moving today, our objective at this point is to make sure the project doesn't have a gate on the accessway. That doesn't preclude the applicant, the future owners, or anybody else from coming back to the Planning Commission. But I think our vote today is clear, I mean, our vote last week was clear, that we don't want the gate. So I recommend just inserting in the previous sentence, which says, "The project includes a new private driveway off Patterson Avenue of varying width," which will not be gated. And I just think that's, that we don't need the next sentence about gated community.
Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, we have those type of communities in our city in Lompoc. And they have these gates. The gates are always open, but they're there if they want to use them. And they have an option of using a key gate, but the gates are always left open in these communities, so they're not gated. And these people could have that same type of option.
I think I'm going to just say that I've heard Commissioner Cooney's solution.
Right, exactly.
And I'm going to get a sense from my colleagues--
Right.
--that that might be the direction we're headed. And maybe if we can get Mr. Tuttle to write Commissioner Cooney's selection down, and why don't we move through the rest of these elements so that we can come to a conclusion. But I think I hear a consensus around Commissioner Cooney's suggestion.
Right, that's good.
So, Mr. Tuttle, if you'll continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. And I have written that revision down, so I can go over that at the end here. Condition number four, which relates to night lighting, has been revised to address the issues of roadway lighting and uplighting, so it states, it's been added that, "Lighting along the internal private roadway shall be no higher than three feet, and there shall be no uplighting of buildings or landscaping." I hesitated to put in language about bollards since there might be an alternative approach that might still meet the same objectives.
Okay, Commissioner Brown, your light?
Yeah, thank you. I think there was interest from the commission in having something other than what is in the Guelita Community Plan, which are sort of outdated standards, because we do have new guidelines in the Eastern Guelita Valley Residential Design Guidelines, and I have discussed, and Mr. Nelson said that he had no problem meeting dark sky standards. So what I would like to do is just to have a reference in this condition to the exterior lighting guideline standards of the Eastern Guelita Valley Residential Design Guidelines, because it outlines there pretty clearly what the standards are. So it would be my proposal to change the first sentence to read, "Any exterior night lighting installed on the project site shall meet the exterior lighting guidelines of the Eastern Guelita Valley Residential Design Guidelines," and conclude the sentence, "and be of low intensity."
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, did you want to keep Alex, the language that Alex provided as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney.
No, no, sorry.
Okay. I get a sense we have consensus on that, so let's move on to the next one, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Condition five, this refers to maintenance of landscaping, particularly around the perimeter. We already had a condition that stated that landscaping shall be maintained for the life of the project. That has just been amended to state, "All landscaping shall be maintained for the life of the project, including perimeter landscaping. New and existing perimeter trees shall be replaced if ever removed in the future."
Okay.
And this would be the responsibility of the homeowners' association, as written in their CCNRs.
Okay, Commissioner Brown.
A question about the exterior landscaping. Are those, on the southern edge, are those trees or are they something else? I don't, they are trees, okay. So is the plan on the landscaping plan to include large shrubs, or it's just all trees? Yes, if, yeah, I'm asking this question to Mr. Nelson because I don't recall the landscaping plan. Thank you.
Jeff Nelson, for the project, we're retaining trees, and there will be a combination of trees and other vegetation that'll be new, but all of the retained trees are shown on plans right now.
Okay, and, but the vegetation, is it to be large screening vegetation?
It's a combination of both trees and shrubs, so you'll have different heights also.
Okay, so I'm...
Of the new.
Okay, so, thank you. So I'm wondering for Mr. Tuttle if we couldn't put, concerning the perimeter trees, if we just couldn't put landscaping rather than just trees? Because if he does have large screening shrubs, then is...
Mr. Chair, maybe the way to do it is just to say, "New and existing perimeter landscaping."
Right, exactly, right. That's fine, right, thank you, okay.
Okay, I see consensus on that one. Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The next condition relates to maintenance of the detention features and drainage features within the site. The condition number 26 would now read, "Detention basins, including infiltration trenches and bioswells, shall be maintained for the life of the project by the homeowners' association." And that was primarily to address that infiltration trench along the west side of the property.
Okay, any other questions on this item or comments? Commissioner Brown?
Is, just in reading that, is that, is that clear enough? Because it says, "The project shall provide for onsite detention of stormwater runoff, infiltration, and recharge where feasible." Oh, including, okay. Feasibility shall be determined, but here it just says, okay, it does say that. Thank you.
All right, and we keep going, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The last condition is Condition 50, and this was something that came out of an earlier project last week in Isla Vista related to affordable housing, and we just added some flexibility into the language in the event that our affordability guidelines or standards ever change in the future. So the last sentence was added, "If future amendments to the county housing element allow developers to pay fees in lieu of constructing affordable units, and such amendments are consistent with state density bonus law, the developer shall be able to utilize those amendments."
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, this, it's getting there, but it's not quite there for me yet. I guess my concern is that if and when we get back and we revisit the inclusionary housing policy, I know we're going to make some changes. We've got direction from the board that there are certain changes to be made, and my concern is, is that we make those changes and we change the policy, but because this is a condition of the track map, they would not necessarily apply to prior track maps. So I think what we need here is language that says that should this condition be in conflict with the inclusionary housing policy as amended, that the developer would have the right to opt for the new program as opposed to being stuck with this particular condition. Now, I'm not sure, the other way I thought we may be able to address this is when we actually get to the inclusionary policy, we could create in the ordinance a provision that would allow them to use the new ordinance in lieu of any inclusionary housing policy that had been attached to a prior map. I'm not sure you could do that, so I need for the staff to wait and tell me.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, in the past, when we've made changes particularly to the housing element policies that have affected projects that have already been entitled, we've required that applicants go through a process and modify their conditions of approval, and I understand that's not what you want. I think the way we've drafted this particular condition, it allows the applicant the option of availing themselves of some future change in policy. I wouldn't want to say it would have to be in conflict, because it may be that the housing element policies will be broadened but not restrictive. In other words, people would be able to do rental housing on a site or allowed to pay an in-lu fee, because one size doesn't always fit all. I know, I know, I know the Housing Policy Group wanted it to restrict more, I just don't know how it's going to happen, because it hasn't happened yet, so this seemed like the most permissive way of trying to address the issue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
And I don't think the other option of building it into the policy necessarily obviates specific permit conditions. That would be my concern.
Commissioner Blau?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, my problem is the language in this paragraph doesn't do that. I don't read it that way. I read it, the only thing I read in this paragraph is that they could pay in-lu fees. It does, for example, another way that you could comply with this is to do a low-cost housing, maybe off-site, maybe not on the site, and that may be, that's going to be one of the other issues that could be occurred. So I just, I need some language here that says, that talks about if there's a change in the inclusionary housing policy, they could avail themselves of the new program as it's amended. They wouldn't have to come back and revisit this map or this condition. The staff could determine that, since they meet the new policy, this condition is satisfied.
Mr. Chair, maybe I hadn't thought about the fact that it could be through a different method, so that's a very good point, and you'll see this in your minutes on the other project that we saw last week, and may want to correct it as well. But I think then we may want to say something like, "If future amendments to the county housing element allow developers to provide affordable housing in an alternative way, then, and such amendments are consistent with state density bonus law," because both of these projects were state density bonus projects.
That would do it for me, yes, thank you.
Okay, can we get, do we need to do anything to acknowledge that's in and that we're done with that? And unless, Commissioner Brown, you have...
I just had a question on the 30 years. Was that, was that, is that the good number, 30 rather than 50? Okay, I just, you know, we talked about that last, right? Oh, okay, all right, fine.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Tuttle, is there more to your presentation?
There is one last thing to my presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, and that relates to the findings for approval. If you recall at the last hearing, we spoke of incentives or concessions that could be granted under the state density bonus program, and identified the reduction in open space from 40% down to 25% as one of those incentives. It was pointed out that based on the percentage of affordability proposed on this site relative to the market rate units, that the applicant was also afforded a second incentive, and so staff felt it was cleaner and more appropriate to include the setback modifications as a second incentive under the state density bonus program, rather than as a modification under the development plan. So we have revised the findings to reflect that approach, and I believe you have the language in front of you at that end.
It worked for me. Commissioner Brown?
I just want to make sure that Mr. Nelson is seeing, he's seen all these, okay, thank you.
Okay, and I don't see any commentary or desire to change that element. Therefore, Mr. Tuttle, do you have anything to wrap up with, or are you complete at that point?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just lastly, in making the, following staff recommendations for approval, just note that that fourth recommendation is no longer applicable.
Okay.
I am finished, I believe. I have a grasp on the revisions to the condition language, and that will be reflected in the action letter.
Okay, at this point, I probably need to open up for public comment on this project, and, Mr. Tuttle, is there anybody behind you wishing to speak, down there in Santa Barbara? Anybody wishing to...
Mr. Chair, there is none.
Okay, and I have one speaker slip. And this is on this item, Mr. Romero? Please come, go ahead and come forward, please.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'd like to preface my statement with, you know, I apologize for entering so late in the game, but it was, I just recently found out about this particular project. My concern with this project is the extensive development that's going to take place and the fact that only a Phase 1 was done for this particular project. For us personally, as you know, the elders council, their whole, one of their functions is the preservation of cultural items and cultural material sites and so forth, and my concern is that for, you know, a Phase 1 for just a basic lot split is fine, but when you get the development that you're going to have on this particular project, I don't think it would suffice for what's going to be taking place there. What I'd like to see is an extended Phase 1 prior to any ground disturbance with archaeological and Native American monitoring. Now, I know that in the project or in the paperwork that I read, that it does call that if something is found or discovered during the grading period, that a Phase 2 will then go into effect, and based on the significance, then a Phase 3 will be taking place, which for me, there is a concern, as well as for the elders, because what we're doing is now we're leaving it up to the backhoe drivers and operators to identify cultural material, and I've been on too many sites where I've seen cultural materials stacked on the side of the, you know, construction area, and was not, the determination was not made by the heavy equipment operator or anybody that's on site, because of the fact that there is no archaeological monitoring or there was no archaeologist on site to make the determination. So that's a concern for us, for the elders council, and I would ask that if that request is denied, then that there would be an archaeologist or a Native American monitor on the site during the grading process, so that we have, we have some sense of protection for any cultural material that may be discovered within this construction or development or this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back, oh, you're not part of the public, you're the applicant. Seeing none, Commissioner Brown, you had a question?
I just had a question for Mr. Tuttle in response to Mr. Romero's comments, that perhaps Mr. Tuttle can just refresh our memory, but concerning archaeological resources, I don't think that there's any in this particular area, but perhaps he can just give us a few sentences to help us jog our memory on this issue.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, there are no known sites in the immediate vicinity of the project site. There are several known sites within about a quarter mile or half mile of the site, oftentimes in locations along creeks. There was, given the sensitivity of the area and the location of known sites in the area, as was pointed out by the public commenter, we did have a Phase 1 survey done on the site by a county-approved archaeologist, and they did not identify any artifacts or significant resources, and based on the results of that report, that's why we determined that Phase 2 wasn't necessary or an extended Phase 1 wasn't necessary at that time, and we'd add in our standard condition of encountering any remains.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back at the commission, and it has been pulled, issues have been presumably addressed. Commissioner Brown, is there any additional element you would like to...
I don't have anything further unless, I think we were just, we had done a conceptual approval last time, and it was just pending the revised conditions, which we have, and if everyone feels comfortable with those revised conditions, I would just ask if Mr. Tuttle could email me once he's inserted all those revised conditions, so I could just ascertain, you could just email me those revised conditions, so I can just look at them to make sure they're in there, but unless any other commissioner has any other concern about any of the conditions that we specifically changed or modified or even addressed today, then I, I'm ready to go forward.
Commissioner Blau?
I just wonder if we could hear from the applicant on Mr. Romero's request to have someone monitoring or being available at the grading operations.
Yes, thank you, Jeff Nelson, again. At the outset, when we were in processing for the last year and a half, one of the issues was, should there in fact even be an archaeological Phase 1 report? Because UCSB has mapping of where there are suggested, indicated, or possible sites, and it's those areas that are based on decades and decades of review in the area that are the trigger for reviewing a site, and this isn't one of those sites and isn't very close to one of those sites, because the creek is actually reasonably far removed from this. And so we raised the issue whether it was really justified to have an archaeological Phase 1 if there was no basis in all of the database that anything is close to this, and Alex, perhaps correctly, in retrospect, said, "No, you're going to have to do one anyway." So they went and did a further study and did an onsite study too, so they did a complete Phase 1, and you would only have a Phase 2 if there was evidence to suggest that you would do a Phase 2, and there was no evidence whatsoever to suggest that there, any further testing was required. So at this point, this has no more likelihood of artifacts than any, anything else, really, because there's zero factual basis whatsoever at this point to suggest that there's further testing, and so the county has standard conditions that if something is seen on site, then you stop, but to have someone with no factual basis whatsoever to force that onsite monitoring of every action isn't supported and isn't consistent with what has happened with the county in previous projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Cooney?
A question, Mr. Nelson. Could you just indicate to us what was called a Phase 1 on this project? You mentioned, I had the impression that... You mentioned, I had the impression that Phase One was a survey, but that there weren't actual exploration portions done on the site. But was something done on the site here specifically during the Phase One study?
Yes. The person not only did historical studies, but went onsite. And I don't have the report in front of me, but I know that they did some probing and they -- so it was basically looking at the site also physically and probing on the site.
So it may have been a quasi-extended Phase One study?
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
That was my next question, too. What's the difference between a Phase One and extended Phase One? A staff could tell me what the difference is.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Blau, I'm not an expert in this field, but my understanding is the difference between a Phase One and an extended Phase One is a Phase One involves more subsurface investigations with some test pits and some additional excavations that a typical Phase One, which is typically just walking through the site, looking for surface materials as evidence of any remains that might be present there. A Phase One might involve some minor subsurface excavations or digging within just the top few inches of the soil, but an extended Phase One would go further than that.
Okay. Ms. Black, I'm just going back over my memory. And it's not completely square here. Maybe you could refresh me.
Mr. Chair, just to reiterate and perhaps clarify, a Phase One is typically a literature search and a walkover of the site. So no vegetation is removed. You simply walk over the site as it exists and observe anything on the surface. An extended Phase One is short of a Phase Two where there's an extensive subsurface testing program, but there's some test trenches or pits that are done in areas where the archaeologists might think there's some sensitivity.
Okay. And Commissioner Valencia, you had a question?
Well, no, I don't have a question. When you get ready to vote, I have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, I am concerned, as is Mr. Romero, that the elders council understand our ongoing appreciation of their involvement in all of our projects. And I just want to be sure that the Phase One study, to the extent it is publicly available, is provided to Mr. Romero and hopefully then to the elders council so that they can be satisfied at least that what was done has been reported and considered by the commission.
Well said. All right. Are there any other information gathering elements to this discussion, or are we ready to move forward? I've heard that Commissioner Valencia has a comment. Would you prefer to hear that first? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And, Mr. Nelson, I just want to tell you that I think you have a beautiful project. The architecture is gorgeous. The landscaping is beautiful. And this is going to be the first time that I'm going to vote against a project. Not because you don't have a good project, you have a beautiful project, but I just don't believe people should live in substandard conditions. And to me, to have a family moving in and living in 930 square feet is not right. I mean, these other people, their neighbors are going to be living in opulence, and these people are going to be living on a night. It's equal to two sizes of my garage, and I just don't think a family should be living there when all these other people are living in such beautiful units. So just for that reason, I'm going to vote against. It's the first time I've ever voted against a project, but I feel very strongly about that. No disrespect for the district, no disrespect to you. I hope that you understand my position. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, are you ready to make any motion?
Yeah. Okay. I'd like to move staff's recommendation to include the changes to the findings and to the conditions of approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, if I may just clarify, staff's recommendation was changed just to include Items One, Two, and Three in the staff report.
Right.
One, Two, and Three, and?
As well as the amendments to the conditions and the files.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That is the motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second the motion and just point out that the staff report of which we're speaking was the -- no, I'm looking at the staff report dated December 14, which was the one we had before us at our last meeting. November 14. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Opeland.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
No.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Both carries four to one.
All right. We will now take, what, five to 10? Oh, well, then let's roll right into the next item, which is -- and Ms. Opeland, if you will, please read it into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of the county executive office to consider case numbers 08RMM6 and 08RVP9, applications filed on August 27, 2008, to modify condition numbers 1, 100, and 142, and add condition numbers 154 and 155 of TM14487 and condition number one of 01DVP16 in compliance with Section 35.23.060 of the County Land Use Development Code, and to accept 01EIR03 as adequate environmental review for case numbers 08RVP9 and 08RMM6 pursuant to Section 15162 of the state guidelines for implementation of CEQA.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Opeland. At this juncture, are there any site visit or ex parte disclosures that commissioners would like to make at this time? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the site, and I tell you, it's a beautiful site. They've done an outstanding job.
Okay. Any other commissioners with that? We'll move to our staff report.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This project was originally enlisted on consent last month at the North County hearing. There were some questions and concerns raised by county council regarding indemnification insurance, and so it was continued. At that meeting, your commission asked that this be put on the standard agenda, so I'm going to prepare to give a brief presentation about the project. What you should have before you today is first my, the staff report prepared dated October 25, and then a second staff report or memo dated November 26 from myself. Just briefly to kind of go over, for those who may not be familiar, this is Vandenberg Village area. The southern end terminus of Vandenberg Village is the Providence Landing Project. Highway One is right through here, which bisects Vandenberg Village, Constellation Road. This is Maple High School. So the actual Providence Landing entire subdivision project is located on the southern terminus of Vandenberg Village. This here just really is just to kind of show a little more of a site plan of what it is. Today, we're talking really about the community park. It's a 12-acre community park, which is located in the central location of the Providence Landing Project. Providence Landing includes approximately 266 homes. Background, Providence Landing Project was originally approved by the board in July 2002. Phase One and Two were recorded in June of 2004. Phases Three, Four, and Five were recorded approximately a year later in 2005. During those phases, completion of the 12-acre community park occurred, and Parks Department signed off on the park this past spring. When the project was originally approved, there was a conditions, or several, which required the formation of a community facilities district to act as the funding mechanism to help pay for the operations and maintenance, O and M, for this 12-acre community park. The CFD came about, it was essentially proposed by the developer at that time to help as the funding mechanism. 2001, when this project was kind of going through the hearings, the CFD was kind of on the front burner for the county. That's when the Orchid Community Facilities District was formed. And so I think initially, they were looking for some type of way to fund the maintenance of this park. The park wasn't something which was identified originally is on the county Parks Department as something that they could pay for the maintenance and funding for. And so therefore, that's how the CFD came about originally with the project. Excuse me. Before you today, the actual project description is to modify the conditions that do have wording or reflect the CFD. Those would be condition numbers 1, 10142 of the track map, 14487, and condition number one of the actual development plan for the community park, 01DVP16. And the request is to remove the requirement for the community facilities district. The HOA has taken a look, and they believe that they can operate and maintain the park more efficiently than what they would have to pay through the CFD. And so therefore, they've come and have asked for the changes to the conditions. In addition, as I mentioned in my introduction, county council and risk management has added, is proposing the addition of two additional conditions, numbers 154, which is additional indemnification clause, and condition 155, which is a condition requiring some additional insurance that the county be included in the HOAs as an insured in that policy. This here is just to really just show you kind of what the park is, for those, again, who aren't familiar with it. It is, like I said, 12 acres, kind of just taking a view across. Over here is the basketball court. You have a tot lot here. There's a restroom, some storage buildings here. There's some green space to play as well here. There's a ball field located right here. Several ball fields, actually. Again, that was that building in the last picture. Away from us, far away, is another ball field. And then up close here is a ball field. And that ball field can also be used as a soccer field, kind of a multi-use field. So it includes fairly active recreational amenities, something that I think that housing development and as well as the community really appreciates. Because it's kind of not only just for the Providence Landing, but also for the community around, the county has retained an easement over the park. The HOA will own the park, but the county has retained an easement to ensure that the public has continued access for the park. Just briefly, staff is recommending or suggesting that your commission find the previously environmental document EIR01 or 01EIR03 as adequate. Essentially, the changes to the conditions, which would require or remove the requirement for the CFD, does not require any additional residential units. There's no significant changes to the physical environment. Therefore, we see that that document is adequate for this project. As conditioned and the modifications to the conditions, the project is consistent still with the comprehensive plan, our subdivision regulations, and the County Land Use Development Code. And just to sum up, then, the commission's motion, staff is recommending, should be to adopt the required findings for the project, including the CEQA findings that was listed in attachment A of the original staff report, also accept the previously approved EIR, and also approve the recorded map modification and revision to the development plan, subject to the conditions included in this attachment B of your staff report. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Any commissioner questions at this time? Commissioner Brown?
The county retains an easement which allows the public to access the park. I just have a lot of what-if questions that might limit the public's access and therefore the county's ability to ensure public has access. I guess we're sort of, my question is, we're on new territory here because we don't have any example of this sort of arrangement in any other project or any else, anywhere else in the county. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, no, that's not correct, actually. What I could have included in my presentation, and I failed to do so, unfortunately. There are two projects. One is Ealing's Park. Now, that's not in the county. That's in the city of Santa Barbara, right off Las Pocedes. Another one is the Gersh Park, located south of the Costco, the Community Real Marketplace project. The Gersh project is a private park. It's funded by a private foundation, but it does have public access to it.
But there's no homeowners association involved with either one of those?
I don't believe so.
That's correct. So, and my knowledge of Gersh is that, I wonder, is there, that they have had funding problems, and it hasn't limited what people can do, but it certainly, it's been a struggle, let me just say then. And for Ealing's, city of Santa Barbara, it's interesting. So we don't really have any example of a homeowners association taking on the funding of a public park or of a, it's a private park where the county has an easement. So we, okay, that's the first question.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, not to my knowledge that we have any specific, I cannot think of one where the HOA does have it. Now, the HOA has begun a business plan, and they've identified multiple funding opportunities. I've spoken with the executive director, who does do the Gersh Park, and admittedly, it is a challenge to keep up with, you know, additional yearly funding. But they have used those two parks, Ealing's and Gersh, as examples in their own business plan. And like I said, they've listed and are aware of multiple funding mechanisms, such as grants, donors, looking for an endowment, which they can draw from every annually. One last, just to make a point about concerns raised with public access. On the park, on the map that was recorded with the Providence Landing Project, it is actually listed on the face of the map that the park, the 12-acre community park, is for public purposes, so that it would have to be, so that there is going to be public access to it. If they wanted to change that and remove all public access, they'd have to come back before your commission to change that, what's on the face of the map.
Has the county, in your knowledge, had other community facilities districts imposed upon a homeowners association, imposed upon residents that fund a public area?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, no, not in this area. The only other community facilities district I'm aware of in Santa Barbara County is the one that's in Orchid, and that's for the general Orchid community plan area. The community, the CFD issue did, was very popular in the early 90s, and I think that's where it came about, in the Illand Empires and stuff, where it was used largely as a funding mechanism for multiple subdivisions, and I think in which HOAs did help fund that.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Zorovich, Rice Ranch has two parks, one a community park and another very small pocket park. Are those HOAs?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, the, all of the parks in the Rice Ranch project, the large community park, and then the neighborhood parks that will eventually be built out, as part of that project, they were all required to be given to the county. So no, the HOA would not fund those parks.
They're deeded to the county? They belong to the county?
Yeah, they're deeded to the county. Now, they are funded, as Mr. Baker pointed out. They're funded, the main, O and M is funded through the CFD, not the HOA.
I thought so. And then, second, I'd like to mention that in the village, Vandenberg Village, they have had a Little League sponsorship of 10, 15 teams for at least 50 years, since the 1960s, and they've done an outstanding job. They've also participated in the youth football program in Lompoc, so they, and soccer teams. We have about 1,500 kids playing. And so these people in Vandenberg Village and Lompoc together have worked together to provide these fields all over the place, and they all work hand in hand. We have games in Lompoc. We have games up in Vandenberg Village and the high schools and all. They all work together, and they're just the same group of people that have been working together years and years and years, and I'm sure the program will be, will work very well.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, my question is, and what I didn't see and hear is, any provision where the county could regain control of this park and continue with the CFD if, for some reason, the owners' association failed to properly operate it or failed to sustain existence? That's a real concern to me because I know of lots of examples of owners' associations that became insolvent, and there are problems. In fact, most of them do have some financial problems today and aren't properly funded. So I didn't see anything in here that creates some kind of a mechanism where the county could regain control of the park and use the CFD funding for future operations. I have one other comment about the indemnity agreement, which I'll get to when you're ready for that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, the conditions, as they're written, do not allow for specifically, to go back to a CFD. They do have language in there that it would be the HOA or alternative funding mechanism. So I guess you could include a CFD as an alternative funding mechanism. What's, if you look at the conditions and take a look at the cleaned-up versions, it doesn't specify, again, the CFD. You could use that. Essentially, in my speaking with the Parks Department, and kind of raised that similar question, that if the funding mechanism, or if the HOA dissolved and couldn't fund this park, quite frankly and bluntly, if the parks were to have to accept it back, it's not identified as-- it's not identified as, there, they could maintain it in their budget right now, and what could happen is just the fence put around the facility until there was funding identified for it. Now, that's not something that they encouraged or discouraged, and unlikely that it could happen, but if it did, that might be the route. But again, as the conditions are written, they do allow for an alternative funding mechanism, but don't specify the CFD.
I guess for me, I'm going to probably defer to council and maybe Commissioner Cooney to give me some guidance on this, but I'd be much more comfortable if the language were changed to say that if the homeowners' association failed to properly maintain the park, or somehow failed, that it's going to revert to what it is to today, and you would start collecting fees the way you collect them today and maintain the park the way you're doing it today. But I will, I mean, seems to me that would be a prudent remedy for their failure. And I don't see, I don't see another remnant here that would, that gives me comfort should they fail. I mean, odds are they're not going to fail, they're going to take care of it, but I can show you examples where owners' associations don't take care of it right, and it's a real disaster. I don't want to see this thing fenced off and let die, because it's not, that's not a good remedy for me.
For meeting, Commissioner Cooney, did you want to respond on this item?
I do, but, you know, I think Mr. Baker has a lot of current information about this particular project. I will say I share absolutely Commissioner Blau's concern. The community facilities district funding mechanism is the one which allowed this commission, a prior commission, to approve this project, and I wouldn't want to let go of that opportunity to have the immediate neighbors fund the project if in fact the homeowners' association, through its fundraising, is unsuccessful. So I'd like to at least hear from Mr. Baker as to why we've leaned away from that.
And if I can, I'll move to Mr. Baker. I believe I have speaker slips from representatives of that homeowners' association, which I know, knowing whether they are soberly entering this, we'll have, we'll bring to bear in questions I have for them. But perhaps it would be good, Mr. Baker, to avail yourself, or have us avail ourselves of what you have with regard to Commissioner Cooney's suggestion.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, the action that's really being taken here is to allow the CFD to be disbanded. If you were to put it back in place, it would require the vote of the people that are forming the CFD. So, I mean, you can't put a condition on that says, if it goes this way, we want the CFD back. You would have to have, the requirements of Melrose are such that you would have to go back through a vote process in order to reestablish that. The reason that the homeowners' association is concerned about this is that there are some significant potential fees that would be charged to every individual home in the Providence Landing area that are not now currently being charged. I mean, it's more than double what they are currently paying. And it's for that reason that, that's one of the reasons that they are saying that they would like to take it over, because they feel that they've got a business plan, which I have reviewed, and told them where I thought the strengths and weaknesses were of that business plan, that will raise sufficient money in addition to their HOA fees, which they are going to continue to pay. I mean, they can pay HOA fees, HOA fees essentially equivalent to what they're paying right now, and be able to maintain the park. I mean, in terms of what they're paying in the CFD right now. But again, in order to go back to the CFD, it would require a vote of the people in that CFD. One of the other concerns that they had was that this is a park which essentially is surrounded by them, and so that they feel that, you know, they have a vested interest in maintaining this park because of the value that it has for the homes that are in the Providence Landing area.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question, Mr. Baker. Would it not be possible to simply allow the CFD to stay in place, but have a provision that so long as the owners' association properly maintains the park, that no funding is required for that? That was my concern. I mean, if, you have the CFD now, and so the county's, through basically their assessment on that, which is just like a property tax, we're kind of guaranteed that the park is going to continue to be maintained. So now what happens, we disband the CFD, we put the owners' association in there, for some reason it fails, you're not going to get the people to vote, to pay the fees, the costs, it's going to be to repair and to start maintaining again. So the question is, let's not do away with the CFD, let's just simply allow it to continue there, we don't need to fund it because there's no money that it needs, but if for some reason the park failed, we could then establish the collection of the fee again and continue the maintenance of it.
I think that's a question that I would pose to the speakers that are prepared to speak, rather than to me at this point, see if they were willing to do that. Because the deal that was struck was to do away with CFD, they don't want that hanging over their head. And it was after discussion at the Board of Supervisors about this issue that we went the way we were going.
Well, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hear from them, but I'm going to have great difficulty doing away with the CFD and just simply relying on the owners' association for the maintenance of a public park.
It won't be a public park if we do this, that's understood, but public access will be allowed.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia, do you have a question?
To Mr. Baker, yes, Mr. Baker. The thrust of this, the question, Mr. Baker, was they felt that they could do a better job cheaper than the county would, is that not the case?
I would say, Mr. Valencia, that not necessarily a better job, but cheaper, yes.
Oh, cheaper, all right. I don't want, all right, thank you very much.
Okay. At this point, I think, now I have three speaker slips, and I'm not sure I count that many in the audience.
I think they're in South County.
Oh, are they? Okay, well, I have Dennis Baker, Ryan Harrington, and we'll follow the next one after that. So is this, if you're, Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Baker had to leave, he was in Santa Barbara, and so I'm gonna, that's not Mr. Baker.
Commissioner Jackson, I was correct, both of the homeowners representatives had to leave because of the discussion time and that they were unable to stay for this park. So we do have Ryan Harrington here, myself, and Jay Higgins.
So if I could fill in for Mr. Baker, I would appreciate it.
Okay, but then introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Jay Higgins, I am Providence Landing HOA board member and employee of the developer. And appreciate the time, thank you, appreciate all the conversations we've had with County Council and P and D staff and Parks and Rec. And thank you for asking for a more detailed presentation of this subject. It is a fairly large substantive issue and for the homeowners out there, and so, you know, maybe we got ahead of ourselves in trying to put this on consent last time, but we had, have had discussions with county supervisors and presented some of this information at at least six or seven Board of Supervisors hearings over the last three years. Every year this comes up at budget time, and it has also come up independently as a CFD item before the Board of Supervisors. So we did, we did feel like we had done a fair amount of information gathering and presentation with county staff and the supervisors. That being said, this has been an issue for the HOA for about three years, and it is nice to be on what appears to be a finish line here on this, and without getting into too much detail in history, there are two main problems with the CFD and the park maintenance structure as it currently is in place. And so we have, our proposal solves both of those issues for the HOA, and I think for the county too. The first problem is that the CFD tax is overpriced. The county set the rate at what is now about $1,400 per parcel per year, that's about $110 a month for each of the homeowners out there, on top of the 180 a month HOA dues. The developer has been maintaining the park at about a $350 per parcel per year rate. So we know what the actual costs are to maintain the park. And the HOA, in this process of taking the CFD burden onto the HOA burden, will set the rate at somewhere between $600 and $900 per parcel per year. And so what you see is, the developer's doing it for about $350, the HOA is going to do it for about double that, the county's rate is double that again. So we're pretty conservative in our estimate that we can afford to do this through the HOA. The second issue that we've had with this thing has been, it's, that it's essentially taxation without representation. For some time, we had asked the county to establish a formal or informal committee made up of homeowners that would oversee the CFD expenditures, because the homeowners are the financiers of this CFD, of this taxing district, 100%. So we said, maybe we could have a little bit of informal oversight on an annual basis or semi-annual basis, where we provide some recommendations to the county in terms of the management of the CFD and our money. The county, only up until this point, has now said, let's actually put our foot on the gas on that concept and actually just let you run with it. So we appreciate that, and that seems to solve our problem as well. So that's kind of the history and some of the things that we've been trying to correct. The fun stuff really, and if you could advance the slide, sorry. Why don't you go one more? This is essentially the same PowerPoint presentation we gave to Mr. Baker and Mr. Hernandez from the Parks Department, and a couple of the supervisors here in the last, I would say, four to six months. It essentially details our business plan. We are going to operate and form a separate 501(c)(3) to operate the park. Now, that language was not invented by the HOA, that language currently exists in the park maintenance agreement. It says, if the CFD should ever be repealed, that then the HOA would have to form or select another nonprofit foundation to operate and manage the park. So that's what has been contemplated and was contemplated, and that's what we're selecting, that option. And through that foundation, we will contract directly with individual sports groups like the Vandenberg Village, Little League, even the city of Lompoc, or the YMCA, women's softball, or whoever wants to come up and operate tennis lessons or whatnot, and directly manage that interaction through the new nonprofit foundation. And we have hired a professional park consultant to help us with the details of such a business plan, and how to manage vendor contracts, and how to let out landscaping contracts, and he's been a fantastic resource for us. Next slide. Briefly, our mission statement is here before you, and our mission is essentially to keep the park public, because we all know, and the homeowners all know, that if it's a public park with public action and sports leagues, and essentially the more, the merrier, then there's less opportunity for vandalism, gangs, and violence. So that's in our best interest, also from a financial standpoint, if people are coming out there and paying us to use the fields, that takes down our tax burden. So that's why we're interested in keeping it public. Next slide. This is just a rundown of our objectives, you see it says to open up a nonprofit park foundation, next slide. Quickly, our board governance structure is to have a board of directors made up of homeowners. And at least three of those members will be HOA board members as well, and this group is, will be in charge of the finances. We'll have an advisory board that will also be a part of the board structure, and that board will invite members of the community onto the board, ideally would be prominent people in the Lompoc Valley, in the recreation, sports community, that will serve on the board and help us essentially with the programming and technical aspects of the park. And finally, since we will be operating as a nonprofit foundation, and hopefully attract some level of public or private grant money, we'll have an honorary board, and this group will be in charge of fundraising. We'll also have, we do have a small amount of budget available for a part-time onsite manager, and like I said, a professional parks and recreation consultant. Next slide. Quick snapshot of our budget, we're currently looking at the same budget essentially that is in effect right now, that County Parks has blessed, and that's $242,000 a year. That translates into $75 a month per home. If the county contributes the $75,000 a year that they have over the past two years, and that is ongoing through the course of the existence of the park, and by the way, we think that that would be appropriate if we're in fact keeping a public easement on the park, that burden goes down to $52 a year for the homeowners out there. So we've got a $242,000 budget, if the county chips in the $75,000 it has in the past, the monthly fee for the homeowners is another $50, instead of the $110, which is the maximum the county could charge. So that's our, those are our costs. We're going into this without any revenue assumptions. So the $52 bucks a month assumes that we're not going to get a penny from operating revenue, from anybody coming out and reserving the group barbecue fields from tennis lessons, zero, because we've been told by our park consultant that we should not expect much in that department. Could probably come up with $10,000 or $20,000 a year in the first couple of years, but we're going to leave that out of the equation right now, especially when we go to the DRE to revise our budget. So that's the story there. We're essentially setting the bar as low as it gets in terms of revenue, but we think we'll end up with something over the course of the year. Maybe next slide. So customer service and reservations, some of our general policies, it's really no different than what currently exists or what would exist under the YMCA's management. Have a website, phone-in number, if you want to do group leagues and make reservations, you can do that. Have a sign out there right now, it says, if you want to reserve the softball fields, call this number, and we'll put you into the queue. Park, let's see, next slide please. Here's some photos of the park that you've already seen, next. Just general, this is again from our business plan, these are the kinds of programs that we'd like to run, next slide. Some special events that we of course would like to pursue up there, again, more the merrier, more people that are out there on a program basis, the better. One more slide, then this is our, we have a website right now that is operational. And so I think what I'd like to do is just introduce Ryan Harrington, he's our park consultant, he is in Santa Barbara, and he can give a couple more details, and I can be back for questions unless you want to hit me with one.
Do you want to take your question now?
Sure, Mr. Higgins. My question for you is, if you have an objection to simply suspending the funding for the CFD, and that it would maintain to be suspended pending your successful operation of the park, with the idea being that for some reason you were unsuccessful down the road, that the CFD could be revitalized and funded as it's funded now? I don't see, I don't see a downside to you, so I'm curious to your comments, just allow it to stay there.
I appreciate the concern about funding, and I assume that's where this is coming from. We have the doomsday scenario of the park being fenced off because the HOA has run out of money. You know, the important issue to remember here is that the HOA is going to now take this burden and put it into their HOA dues. And the HOA, the financing of HOAs through the HOA system is managed by the Department of Real Estate. And we have situations now, well, let me back up.
Just to state, I got to correct you, that's not quite true. I mean, it certainly is true when you establish your budget as a developer and you get your white report, but once you no longer own and have control of the association, there's nothing preventing the association members from holding an election, holding a vote, and suspending maintenance of the park if that was their desire.
I guess I, legally is that, I'll defer to your expertise on that, I don't know if that's legally, what could happen, I don't think practically that could, that's something that we're planning on, otherwise, you have that situation that exists right now with any public amen, any quasi-public amenity in any development right now, where the county still has an easement. And there are several subdivisions that I'm aware of in the county, where the county has said, you know, you have your open space requirement, and it's going to be a couple acres, we need to have you to have pathways and light up the pathways and some plantings and irrigation and whatnot, and that needs to be public. And any time, the HOA could say, well, we're not going to maintain that public open space anymore. It's got a county easement over it. So you currently have that situation right now, and in terms of, yeah, this is a larger animal, and could the, could the...
Well, I guess, my question to you was, why you would object to the CFD staying in place... place and simply suspend the collection of any funds from these property owners pending your successful operation of the park? The only way the CFD would ever collect any money in the future is if
Right.
the unthinkable thing happens and the homeowners association is unable to continue the maintenance of it, or they elect not to by some vote.
I'm going to give you a roundabout answer to that question, sorry. The, I would have to go back to the HOA for, to have some feedback from all of our members vote on that. But let me just, if you would indulge me for a second. The path that we've been on with the county for the last couple of years and sort of explaining some of the challenges that we've had with the CFD has put us on a path to, I believe, legislatively repeal the CFD through a vote by the board. I believe through the Melrose Act, we could vote to repeal it ourselves by circulating a ballot. So that would be the other way by which we go ahead and repeal the CFD. We're not on that path. We're on the path where the county has said, you know what, we do kind of see that you guys have some problems. We have some other open space areas that are maintained by HOAs. There's no problems there. We see that the budget's pretty high. The HOA members go, look, if we don't get rid of the CFD now, who knows with the county's budget issues, et cetera, whether or not they come back and just hit us between the eyes with a $1,400 a month assessment or a year assessment? So that's been the fear. The homeowners don't have any control or input over the park financing or programming. This is, this is the path that we'd like to be on to gain control of programming and the finances. So it's really a fear-based issue with, could we live with the CFD? Well, that doesn't address the fear that we have that the county could come back and crank up assessments if by some chance they don't agree with what we're doing out there. So that's, that's the path that we're on right now, which is to do this through a vote of the board.
Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Higgins, you indicated that the board of the nonprofit would be made up entirely of members of the homeowners association. Is that right?
That is correct, although we did, in one of our presentations, I believe, to the county at some point say, well, we'd like to put some members of the county, maybe a member from their district's office, maybe somebody from the Parks Commission, somebody from the Parks Department, on that board of directors, and we have no problem with that.
The operations of the park appear to me to be a joint venture of the homeowners, the county, and the community at large. And if you're using the Gersh Park and Ealing's Park models, they don't have the homeowners' component. They are made up of, those boards are made up of citizens who care about maintaining those parks and who are willing to go out and raise money on a very significant level to keep the parks operating. It's an ongoing, constant, difficult task to raise enough money, particularly in this environment, but always to maintain these parks in spite of the fact that fees are charged to every organized use and some that are less well-organized. So, you know, looking ahead, it concerns me that control of the dollars is placed 100 percent in the hands of just one of those joint ventures, the homeowners. Their goal is going to be to drive their contribution down. So any contributions that come up, whether they raise them or not, are going to be utilized first before they, they come up with their own contribution. So it's the reverse of taxation without representation. It's really the opportunity to control the funds for the benefit of what is really a community park that was added as an important, a critical, I would say, condition to the approval of your project. So it bothers me that the burden is being shown as being entirely on the homeowners, when in fact, you know, really, this is something the developer benefited from, and now we're talking about a group that would have incentive to reduce their contribution overall. Maybe the, maybe the Melrose fees were too high. Maybe we should have just stopped there and said, let's, let's be realistic about these fees and lower them. And I realize the boards had extensive discussions, but in defense of this planning commission, this is the first time since I've been on the commission that we've had an opportunity to consider these issues. So we do take them seriously as well.
Commissioner Cooney, I appreciate that. I would love to get Mr. Harrington to give the rest of the story here on our presentation, but I'm sorry, Commissioner Jackson, if you had some other question?
No, no, I'm trying to, I have the, I thought the public slips were the homeowners association. I'm trying to know who's who and who's on first. And is, Mr. Harrington is in Santa Barbara and is available? It would be helpful. He's part of the...
He is the Parks and Rec consultant hired by the HOA.
Okay. Let's go ahead. Good morning.
The first thing that I'd just like to talk about is the fact that there is already a $200,000 reserve set up by the CFD in place for the park. One of the greatest things is that, in addition to that, the funding mechanisms are also there. One problem that Ealing's Park and Gersh Park had when they first began was that they didn't have funding mechanisms, and it took several years to get to that point. Well, this park will already have those funding mechanisms in place. In addition, we'd also be looking at creating an endowment and create excess revenue in order to create a more self-sustaining organization. Excess revenue would also translate into other fundraising opportunities such as creating a scholarship program for kids that normally can't afford to participate in recreation programs like after-school programs, summer camps, et cetera, to bring those kids in to let them participate. I think Jay touched on most of the points that I was going to talk about, so I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns about the project.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. You'd indicated that there's already a $200,000 reserve. Once, if this, if the CFD is abandoned, from day one, the homeowners have to start scrambling to start raising money and finding funds and doing other things. So basically, they have one-year operating expenses in hand. Is that correct with this reserve?
It is correct. However, with the homeowners association fees along with the proposed $75,000 from the county, it would be fully funded, you know, at least for the, for the first couple of years, if not ongoing for...
But we don't, but the funding from the county is, it's not guaranteed, is it? Because next year or in a subsequent budget, they could say, gee, we're reducing the fees to 25,000 or 10,000 or no fees this year. Is that, that could happen?
It could very well happen, and in that case, the board would have to fundraise and, you know, be collecting user fees to offset operation costs.
And they could also subsequently reduce their, the contribution from the homeowners' fees.
The only way that I would advise the nonprofit or the homeowners association to do that is if they created an endowment that could offset the costs. And in my mind, the amount of money that would come in from both the county and the homeowners association would be reduced equally based on what would come in from an endowment, if that ever...
And my little knowledge of what has gone on at Gersh, and you probably have more information, is it has taken some, them some time to establish an endowment. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm actually the executive director of Gersh Park.
Ah, okay. So you would have some, so my knowledge is that the city of Galita has continually contributed additional funds over the few years. They started with nothing, and I don't know what they're doing now, but it's been fairly significant. Is that not so?
Yes, it is. We also are funded by our endowment as well as user fees and fundraising, and we are finally at the self-sustained level.
Right. But it's been a pretty, it's been pretty difficult, hasn't it?
It has, but it's a different situation because, again, there is no homeowners association that is funding the park.
Right. But could not the homeowners, in this case, say, sorry, we're just going to cut our, what we've been providing in half or by a third or some amount, and maintenance would suffer and other issues? I mean, that is a real possibility, is it not?
I don't think so. I really can't answer that question completely.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there another speaker in Santa Barbara that wishes to speak on this item?
Commissioner Jackson, my name's Gavin Moors. I am actually the president of the HOA, and I do also work with Capital Pacific Homes. And this really has been a path that we've embarked on to kind of create a win-win scenario. The very questions that you are asking today are exactly the same questions that the HOA was asking that started this very situation, where they were being taxed, where they were paying for the park, and they had no input on the park. The HOA, I am sure, will approve and recognize that they are willing to place a CFD in, in reserve in case they do not maintain the park. So I think that that matter is easily resolved. I understand your concerns because you're looking at it from one perspective of the county position. If you look at it from the perspective of the homeowners' positions who are paying those fees, and if you look at that park, and I thank Commissioner Valencia for going out there and looking at that park, it's in great shape today. It is being used. It is operating. We are maintaining that park for $4,500 a month. And so at the end of this, money is what is really stirring the debate, but at the core is a group of people that believe in the park, believe in the formation of the nonprofit, what they're doing, for the benefit of not just the residents, but the community. And I think that while your concerns are certainly justified, there are solutions to it, but I think we're going wildly off track from what was the original intent of moving forward to having the homeowners take possession and management of the park. If the county doesn't want an easement, then we won't ask for any contribution from the county.
Okay. At that point, I don't think I have any other speakers. Are there any questions of this speaker at this point? I think we're trying to distill down an argument. I agree with the previous speaker. We've spun out a little bit here. Mr. Baker?
Well, if I could ask the speaker a question back again.
Mr. Harrington, if you're still there. Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Newton, I'm sorry, get him.
Yeah, so what I heard you say was that you don't have a problem if we just simply suspend the CFD, leave it in the background with a provision that says, so long as you maintain the park properly, no problem.
I had conversations with four of the, sorry, three of the other homeowners members this morning, and we discussed in depth the original conditions that we were here to go through. But knowing the conversations and how those, how they went on the phone, and having just spoken to one of them, I, it doesn't make any sense why they would object to that.
Right. I agree with you. So that would, it solves my problem entirely. So great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Rebecca.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't know if we've gotten quite this far yet, but if the commission is inclined to look at the option of suspending the CFD, I would like an opportunity to look at, to see what that looks like under CFD law, to make sure that that is a possibility.
Mr. Baker, just clarify for me. In the event of a worst-case scenario, there aren't funds to take care of it. Three years down the road, there's an attractive nuisance. I guess what you're saying is, at some point, somebody steps in, or does nobody step in? If it's, and, because I, to me, if we're going to keep and hold in abeyance something that we're removing out of the picture today, is that really a viable scenario? I understand council will need to study it. But really, what is the downside risk? What are we, let's just say we didn't do that. What's the downside risk? Funds aren't presented, project falls in disrepair, or whatever. Under the scenario that you presented, what happens?
Mr. Chair, if that whole downside happens, I think you end up designating this as a nuisance. And it may be ending up, just as John Zorovich said, is that you're fencing it in as an attractive nuisance. If all those things were to happen. I want to just say a couple of other things. Jay mentioned that the CFD could go out of business if they wanted to petition the board to do such, and they had sufficient votes.
You mean the HOA?
No, the CFD.
Okay.
Could go out of existence, just by virtue of a petition process from the members of the, well, it would be the HOA people, because they are the CFD, that would take, that could take it out of business. If you are to go to just suspending the CFD, I think we have to really go back and look how that can possibly be put together. And I would want to have some discussions with a larger group of the HOA members that I've had the discussions with before, before we would do that.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia.
Mr. Chair, you know, we're doing a lot of ifs, but it's highly unlikely. There's 328 families that are going to be living in there that are going to let a 12-acre jewel go to waste. They're not going to let it do it. It's gorgeous now, it's used, it's, what they're going to have, is they're going to have so many people wanting to use it that they're going to have to hold people back because there's going to be so much demand. There's not going to be less demand. It's going to be maintained, and it's going to be in great shape. And they're already doing that, and there's already demand for it.
Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, as has happened before this commission on other items, I think the parties had a right, or at least believed, that the project approval would be forthcoming from this commission. And I think we have enough questions and concerns that it's appropriate to see if the, if the proponents would like to have some more time for the opportunity of county staff and county council to come back with some further recommendations. I have to say that if I were voting in favor of this project at this time, my concerns would be such that I would vote against it. So I'm not sure that the proponents would like to push it today, but if they would, that's fine. We can, we can do it, and then they can, as with all matters, appeal to the board if they're not happy with the commission's decision.
Commissioner Brown.
I really think this is a, not that complex an issue, that it's not going to take county council but a few days to analyze the effect of just simply suspending the CFD. So I'm going to propose, I mean, I would like to see this continued to the shortest possible time, just to get that information to come back, because I can't imagine the homeowners association objecting to it. We're giving them everything they ask, and I have every confidence this is going to work. I mean, if I'm one of those 300 homeowners, I'd love to have control of that park taken out of the county, because I know they'll probably do a better job in the county. But I, as a commissioner, I've got to look out five, 10, 20 years as to what might happen. And I just see no reason that we would not have a viable way to gain control should a disaster happen. So I'm going to support a continuance for the shortest possible time to get that very simple question answered and then prepared to move forward. I would actually be prepared to vote for it today and approve it with the condition that the CFD is suspended, but that may be a problem for council. But, so for me, the best part is a very short continuance.
Mr. Chair, I'll just remind you that the next scheduled meeting we have is in Santa Barbara on January 21st. So that would be the shortest.
And I'm assuming that January 21st can't be that big a deal for the, for the HOA, and I don't think they would object to putting this on in Santa Barbara, because I see it as a consent item, to tell you the truth. It's one small issue.
Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Chair, I think that this is important enough for me that I would need to get some more information from Ms. Van Mullin on what this might mean. I, I mean, we have no idea what she's going to find. I realize you can put it on consent and pull it, but there may be some other considerations that need to be addressed. And I guess one consideration, we put these things on consent, and they take half hour, like we saw in the Noel, and it takes a lot longer than what we think, and I think it's easier to look at your agenda and have realistic timeframes and unrealistic ones. So I would just prefer as a regular agenda item on the, on the first meeting, I think all the, all the folks are from Santa Barbara anyway. Mr. Higgins came up from Santa Barbara? No? Yeah?
Commissioner Brown, we, most of our homeowners live in Santa, I'm sorry, live at the development, and some do work there.
I understand, but they were, but they were...
Either location, we can make work through remote testimony. So I appreciate that. I would just ask staff or the commission, whoever would like to chime in, at least now or maybe through the rest of the holidays or at some point, under what scenario are we talking about where the CFD is re... Under what scenario are we talking about where the CFD is reenacted? If, you know, so, if we get to the point where it needs to be fed, so some definition there on that doom and gloom scenario. We would like some clarification there before we agree to this abeyance concept. But in general, yeah, we could go for the continuance.
I see a direction headed here. The only problem I have is whether it's a consent item will be highly dependent on what council finds. So that it is probably more practical that it be continued as a full item and addressed. And if I might add for county council, Rancho Cucamonga has one, if it helps. I think they have two. So they do exist. But, and the challenge, I would say, to the applicant, however, is the burden of graffiti expense is a, has been a contingent liability that has caused a great deal of tension in these down south, just aggregate expense for vandalism. And that's a burden to consider as you go forward on this. That's why the nightmare scenario is discussed, is because that is faced down south as an offshoot of that problem. What I'm hearing, and I know there are other speakers who want to speak on this, on the panel here, is that appears to be the direction I would recommend is, I'm not going to be here, mind you, so.
I don't care if it's going to stand around, that's just, to me, it's a simple issue, but it could go either way. I don't really care. To answer Mr. Higgins' other question, I would pose this, that the trigger for the CFD coming back would be their failure to properly maintain the facility as determined by the Board of Supervisors. So there would be an actual hearing, there would be evidence, there'd be testimony, and if the board determines that you aren't doing it correctly, so be it. The CFD gets reenacted. And I think you would not object to that, because it's rarely public process.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is your last act, and I would hope that you would help those people there. We have six hours on January 21st. So we put this on as a night, and we're going to be there till 8 o'clock at night. I'm not sure we're going to make the best decisions. The only question is the CFD. That's the only question, and the question is, if when it goes in limbo, what happens? And that's the only thing. And that can be answered in a consent calendar. So to me, we could vote a conceptual vote right now and tell you how we feel. And then, the only deal with a CFD, nothing else. Don't expand the conversation to anything else, or we'll never solve this problem.
Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair, really, it has no practical effect whether you put this on as a consent item and pull it, or you put it on as a regular item and hear it, because either way, you're going to spend the amount of time you're going to spend.
My only reason for doing that, however, is to be realistic about the timeframe when you budget it and that date. It won't bother me.
And Mr. Chair, given the experience we've had on this project to date, I just don't think it's going to be a consent item. So I would just put it on as the first item on the regular agenda, and we'll get through it as quickly as we can. That doesn't mean you'll have a long staff presentation. It just means we'll hit the issue.
Commissioner Valencia, I did not mean to cut you off.
No, thank, no, but my feeling is that if the council, county council, gives us a staff report that outlines everything for us, we can read it ourselves, and we don't have to have major discussions. We can just, during the conceptual vote, yea or nay. I mean, we read the staff reports. We don't have to reiterate everything that the staff report says. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney.
I just, if there is a timing issue to which we should be sensitive, I'd like to hear about it. Otherwise, I'd be inclined to schedule it for North County and do it in the normal course of things, even if it's February. But as I understand it, the park is operating the way it is now, and there's not a, another two weeks wouldn't make a difference. But let me know if I'm wrong about that.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Whatever facilitates the process for the applicant, and I appreciate it, they probably would have liked a decision today. But what I see is that there's just, there's a lot of unanswered questions here. And I would prefer that the information come out and rather, before we make the decision to have this understanding. Now, I realize there are commissioners who've been on this panel, who've been through this process and looked at this. But, you know, some of us are new, and there's going to be a new commissioner. And I just have a lot of questions with my, knowing with my experience of what's gone on with Gersh. And I'm, it's not that I'm not supportive of the homeowners. I am, because they seem to be really eager and able to do this. But I think that we have to be prudent and careful, and that's my intent in just, in having the opportunity to ask questions and to have a discussion with the commission.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Higgins and I have been conducting sign language. And he's fine with this matter being taken up in Santa Maria on February 11th. It's not a full agenda. Give the new planning commissioner some time to absorb this as well.
I was eavesdropping on that.
Yes. I just have one other issue. Just, this is maybe something for county council just to tell me about. On your 154 condition, in the last sentence, I'm concerned about the word "sole", and wonder if that needs to be there or not. Where it says that we're getting an indemnity agreement from the association, except for certain acts by the county. And the word just bothers me a little bit. It's kind of like if the county's 90% at air, and they're at 10% at air, we're still not responsible, where they have to indemnify you. Did I read that correctly, or do you need to look at that issue?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, that is our standard indemnification used by risk management. They do use sole negligence. That also is standard language. So I'm not sure exactly what about it makes you uncomfortable, but I do think it would probably mean 90%, although I think, I mean, that is an issue, whether it's contributory negligence or sole negligence.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Cooney, interrupt me if I'm going in the wrong direction, but I think a motion is in order to continue to February 11th, whether it's got sole or not. And unless Commissioner Cooney has.
No, I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to continue this to February 11th, cognizant of sole, cognizant of everything else we've thrown in. Any further discussion, Commissioner Brown?
Nope, ready to vote.
All right, Ms. Opel.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
Five-minute break. Number two, and Ms. Opel, if you'll please read it into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Mr. David Swank of Urban Planning Concepts, agent for Pat Farini of Beteravia Farms, property owner, to consider case number 08-DVP-14, application filed on April 23rd, 2008, and to approve the mitigated negative declaration 08-NGD-28 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any site disclosure or ex parte? And Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I went over to the site, and the gate was open, and I drove all around the facility, and drove around and saw the entire area. Very pretty.
Commissioner Brown?
I got a phone call from Mr. Swank, agent for the applicant.
Okay, Commissioner Blau?
I have been to the site.
Commissioner Cooney.
I visited the site. The gate was not open, but did have an opportunity to canvas the neighborhood.
I drove the site, and I got a call. I didn't return from Mr. Swank. So, moving on. Good morning, Mr. Eady.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson, fellow commissioners. Before I start the staff presentation, I'd just like to draw your attention to a memo I believe was just distributed to you, a few minor cleanup items on the findings, but important to include. That is part of your motion, if you so choose. So moving on to the presentation, as Ms. Opel already eloquently expressed, we're considering the Tier III winery development plan for C2 sellers. Project site is located at the intersection of Highway 135 and San Antonio Road, approximately six miles south of Santa Maria and seven miles east of Los Alamos. The project site is approximately 2,953 acres, and currently contains a significant area of agricultural cultivation. Surrounding land uses include row crops, cattle grazing, and petroleum extraction to the south. The project site contains an existing facility, which was originally developed as a produce cooler and approved via conditional use permit. The facility is currently being operated as a Tier 1 winery, which was approved via land use permit earlier this year. Here's a site photo of the front of the facility with the stick-built administrative building facade. Here, we're looking at the backside truck docks, and the vineyards that are newly planted are in the foreground. And the backside of the facility, this is a view that you would get if you were heading north on Highway 135. Here's a site plan of the existing facility and its associated infrastructure. You can see there's already considerable amount of existing parking, large truck docks. A lot of the similar infrastructure was built as part of the cooling center that you, in case, in fact, need for a winery. Here's a layout of the existing facility, and you can see, highlighted in red, is the only new development that's proposed as part of this application. It's functionally just a gap between two existing buildings that already has existing slab. There will just be a wall enclosure put up to create an area of secured storage. So as far as the winery is concerned, it's a proposed Tier III winery with an annual production of 52,000 cases per year. The project description does not include any public wine tasting, nor have they requested any special events. It's expected there will be two full-time employees and four seasonal. And as all wineries, the site contains an existing area of vineyards, in this case, 26 acres. As previously mentioned, most of the development already exists. It's about 19,000 square feet of structures. The new enclosed space will be 2,450 square feet. The only grading proposed will actually be just to lay a drainage line that will connect the facility to the existing wastewater pond. So we'll have about 34 cubic yards of earth disturbance, with the 507 linear feet of trenching required to lay that pipe. Project is consistent with the agricultural element, visual resource policies, hillside and view shed policies. In this instance, like I said, we have very little new development, very little change to the existing aesthetics of the site. The project site is also consistent with the winery regulations. This is a unique circumstance where we have a Tier III winery that normally is allowed a public wine tasting room and special events. But due to the inadequacy of the domestic separate system on this site, the applicant requested to forego those rights normally bestowed to a winery. Moving on to environmental issues, staff did prepare a mitigated negative declaration for this project, circulated it publicly, only received one response from APCD. Ultimately, impacts are very minor, some dust control, a discovery clause in case any unknown artifacts are recovered during the minor trenching activity, hazardous materials business plan, and a solid waste management program. So ultimately, staff recommends that you adopt the required findings for the proposed project, specified attachment A of the staff report, including SEQA findings, as amended by staff's memo dated today, approve 08-NGD-28, and approve 08-DVP-14, subject to the conditions included in attachment C. I'm available for any questions, and so is the agent.
Okay, are there any questions for staff at this point? Mr. Eady, the short version, AQMD and days, can you just share that?
Chairman Jackson, so as I previously mentioned, when we circulated the environmental document for this project publicly, the only respondent was APCD, and obviously, their concern being air quality. What is unique for this project is that we're looking at a SEQA baseline of the produce cooler, not the Tier 1 winery. That's because the application for the Tier 1 winery came in the same day as this Tier 3 application. So when you look at SEQA baseline, it's, it would have, could have been construed as segmenting had we used the Tier 1 winery as a baseline. So all the analysis of the document is based on the produce cooler. What that results in is that we always look at air quality impacts on a single-day basis. So in this case, you do have a Tier 3 winery that exceeds the air quality produced by the produce cooler. But that is partly because wineries have a very brief, but very intense time of air quality impacts that are due to harvest season. Whereas the produce cooler would produce a perhaps greater amount of air quality emissions, especially related to traffic, over a yearly basis, because their facility operates at a higher intensity throughout the year. Whereas wineries generally only have a two-to-three-week period during the fall, where harvest season, they have a lot of trucks coming in.
And will this project follow the standard conditions for, that it probably has been since it was built, with regard to the ammonia and all of the produce, or the cooler aspects of it?
Correct. Chairman Jackson, the benefit of this facility is that it is a significant distance to the nearest residence. Even on the project site, you're talking upwards of half a mile before you get anywhere close to a residence.
Okay, that takes care of my questions. We can go to the applicant at this point.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is David Swank with Urban Planning Concepts, and I'm here along with Mr. Pat Farini, the landowner of Beteravia Farms. And we're here today to request the approval of this development plan for C2 sellers. We would like to thank Mr. Eady. The process was very expeditious, and he handled all of the issues in a very professional manner. And we were very pleased with the processing of the project. As Mr. Eady had mentioned, this was a historic cooler facility that was recently converted and changed use to a Tier 1 winery to basically store contracted barrels. The purpose of this development plan, we have recognized that there has been a growing need for storage and processing facilities for local, small winemakers and wineries in the area. And what this project is intended to do is to fulfill that need. And what they're doing is offering these storage facilities for these various small-town wineries, but also, as part of the Tier 3 development, to also offer crushing, bottling services, not only for these local winemakers in the area, but also, Beteravia Farms is starting the processing currently. They have 26 acres of grapes that are installed that they'll process in site, with a potential addition of increased acreage in the future. So in terms of this site, as Mr. Eady had mentioned, we do have all existing facilities that are on-site that have been permitted as a Tier 1 winery. We also have the winery wastewater system for this site that has already been permitted by the state, and it's ready for operation. So really, there's no changes to what's going on with this facility, except for adding the crush pad and the bottling areas for portable bottlers to come in. So this project is consistent with the zoning ordinance. It's consistent with all the applicable policies. And we would request that you approve the project. If there's any questions, I'm available, and also, Mr. Farini.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
What kind of, what varietal, what variety of grapes have been planted?
I know it's approximately 60% red and 40% white, the actual kind of grape.
Oh, we don't know.
I'd have to ask Mr. Farini.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? I think we're ready to go to public comment. I'll take a look. Is there any slips? And they're not rushing to the gates, so I'll bring it back to the commission. Any other questions for staff? Not going to try and drag it out. It looks, Commissioner Valencia, since this shares our, or straddles our districts.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say that the site was exceptionally clean. Usually, these sites, there's a lot of disarray and so on. But as I drove around, they had a, I think a Peterbilt truck parked out in back semi. Everything looked very neat. There wasn't any junk. All the driveways were clean and neat, and so I was very impressed with the site.
Okay, at this point, then, Commissioner Cooney, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Then we are in search of a motion, and I'll defer to you. Commissioner Valencia.
I'd be happy to share it with you, that we adopt the required findings for the project specified in attachment A of the staff report, including SEQA findings, and that we approve the negative declaration 08-NGD-0-string-28, attachment B, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program containing the conditions of approval, and that we approve 08-DVP-0-string-14, subject to the conditions included as attachment C, and that we include the comments from the memo submitted today, item number 2, dated December 10, receipt 2 sellers winery DVP 08-DVP-0-string-14, submitted by Mr. Eady.
And I will second that. And we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, I want to, I don't want the motion and the project to pass through our hands without commenting with regard to the contribution. hands without commenting with regard to the contribution of the Air Pollution Control District. I know this commission pays a lot of attention when APCD contributes to a staff report, and in this case, they reviewed the negative declaration, offered comment, and what I think it did is it stimulated the applicant and staff to refine the numbers to the point where we could adopt a document that says there is not a significant impact from this project toward the air pollution issues. That's not to say that the applicant shouldn't endeavor to minimize those and incorporate wherever possible methods of operation which would assist the air quality, because I do think as we go forward into the future, more and more projects are going to raise the issue of what appears for any single project to be a minor problem of contributing to greenhouse gases in the cumulative effect is going to be significant for Santa Barbara County. So I certainly commend APCD for staying on top of this and look forward to their input in future projects.
Any other comments from commissioners? Otherwise, I believe we are ready. Ms. Oplin?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
Alrighty. Do we need setup time for our next item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I didn't want to let this moment pass either, but for a very different reason. I don't know if the commission always pays attention to the timeframes for projects, but this one, we received on April 23rd, received on April 23rd, and within seven and a half months, five months from the complete date, Nathan had it to hearing. So I think we should.
Congratulations.
Acknowledge that as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, along with that, before Ms. Tamora leaves, I want to thank her for the nice spread that she had for us and all of the engineering companies. It was a very nice Christmas gesture. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated.
Okay. Shall we take five minutes, or shall we? All right, we'll take five. I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of Mr. Brett Jones, agent for Mr. and Mrs. Tom Stoll, landowners, to consider case number 06 TPM 1, TPM 14691, application filed on January 20th, 2006, and to approve the mitigated negative declaration 08 NGD 22 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay, are there any site visit disclosures or ex parte conversations? Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, I had the most beautiful drive going out all the way down on baseline and coming out on Armore Ranch Road. Saw a lot of beautiful country.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney?
I took the same drive and concur with Commissioner Valencia, it's really beautiful country.
Been there, done that. Anybody else? Okay, we'll begin, and good morning, with our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. I'll just start briefly orienting you to the location of the site. Here's the project site in white here, in the eastern San Ynez Valley, State Highway 154, cuts a diagonal line this way with San Ynez to the west. And here we have a close-up aerial view of the property site itself off of Santa Agüeta Road, and a baseline avenue cuts through this way, and the Santa Agüeta Creek runs on the west side of the property, approximately in this area. Quickly, we have our land use designations map that shows the AGG 1.5 designation for the site and many of the surrounding properties, whereas on the east, we have larger agricultural parcels in the agricultural commercial designation. And similarly, the zoning map shows the five-acre zoning of the property and surrounding area with, to the east, larger 100-acre zoning. The project is a two-way lot split proposed for the roughly 11 and a half acre parent lot to two proposed parcels of approximately five and a half and six acres respectively. Here's a copy of the proposed tentative parcel map, rotated 90 degrees north is to the left-hand side of the screen. And again, we have the creek corridor here, Santa Agüeta Creek to the west, and parcels A and B proposed to be divided along this line roughly east to west. One of the issues we review in these ag properties is the agricultural policies and goals of the county, which is to strive to preserve agriculture as a primary economic foundation of the San Ynez Valley and encourages retention of highly productive agricultural lands. And in his vein, any new development or subdivision must demonstrate that the agricultural integrity and ability of the land to conduct independent viable agricultural operations will not be significantly compromised. And in this case, even though the lot contains prime soils over the entire 11 and a half acre lot, it has not been historically farmed, it is not considered capable of supporting an independent crop operation due to the lot's small size. And therefore, through the environmental document, through our viability points analysis, neither the parent nor any of the proposed resultant parcels are considered agriculturally viable. The second issue related to its proximity to Santa Agüeta Creek is that the entire lot is within the 100-year floodplain of the creek, and therefore, the project is subject to the Chapter 15 of the County Code Floodplain and Management Code and Flood Control Division Review. And due to those issues, the project is conditioned to maintain a 100-foot structural setback from Santa Agüeta Creek and to elevate any future structural development at least two feet above the base flood elevation in the area, and to also provide buyer notification for future owners that there are special provisions for future development. As far as cultural resources, the lot is within one mile of an archaeological site, and therefore, a Phase 1 archaeological survey was performed on the site, and this review identified no cultural artifacts. And therefore, the project has been conditioned to halt or redirect construction if cultural artifacts are discovered. As I mentioned, there is in your packet a proposed final mitigated negative declaration. And through that process, the document, the draft document was circulated for a 21-day public review, and through that review, no public or agency comments were received on the draft document. Therefore, the proposed final is identical to the draft that was circulated. And quickly, I'll go over the identified impacts and mitigation measures. The first area is in aesthetics and visual resources, where the visual rural setting indicated that future development for residential structures shall go through design review with Central County Board of Architectural Review. And as far as night lighting, that we have a lighting plan that shows minimally intrusive lighting and downward casting fixtures. As far as air quality, the potential for the creation of dust through construction, short-term impacts would be mitigated through dust control methods that are standards applied by the APCD. Under biological resources, the riparian habitat that is associated, the minimal riparian habitat that is associated with Santa Agüeta Creek would be protected by a creek setback for the structures, as we mentioned, in addition to protective fencing during construction to ensure that vegetation is not disturbed. As I mentioned before, in cultural resources, the potential disturbance of cultural artifacts would require work stoppage upon discovery, which is a standard condition applied to these types of projects. Under geologic processes, the potential for erosion and during grading for construction would be controlled through erosion and sediment control plans reviewed by the Building and Safety Division of Planning and Development, and also grading season limitation that directs these activities to occur in the dry season, and if that cannot be avoided, then additional erosion control measures are specified. Under noise, we have short-term exposure, actually, it says short and long-term exposure, that's a mistake. It should say short-term exposure due to construction activities only, and therefore, there's a construction hours limitation. And underwater resources and flooding, the potential for development on the site could exacerbate flood issues on the site and downstream, and there's a mitigation measure that requires water conservation measure implementation if the impervious surface of the property is greater than 25% of the total area. And for construction water, potential pollution due to siltation or runoff of oil or other contaminants during construction would be managed through a management plan that would be required of the project. Other than that, as far as the policy and ordinance consistency, the proposed project has been determined to be consistent with conditioning with all applicable comprehensive plan policies as stated in the staff report, and in addition, all zoning ordinance provisions are satisfied. And then therefore, we recommend approval of the project following the procedure in section 2.0 of the staff report, and I'm available for questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff with regard to this? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question on well and septic systems in a floodplain. How does, one can do that? Obviously, they're, they're now, the well and the septic system is there now, I'm just wondering how, and the well's going to be shared, but how would a, one can put in a septic system in a floodplain?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, yes, in my experience, I'm not a technical expert on this issue. In my experience, there are measures that can be taken to protect local septic systems and also wellheads from intrusion from floodwaters. I'm not sure exactly how that's accomplished, but I do know that in the conditioning from Environmental Health Services where a multi-parcel water system and the septic system plans must be approved, I'm sure that those, the technical experts look at those issues, and I'll certainly forward your concern onto them.
Well, I just, I just had the question, because I didn't, I didn't know, and I just, when they see this, obviously, when I guess, well, maybe not obviously, but when they go to get their permit, does somebody look to see that this project's, the whole site's in a floodplain? Do they know that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, this item did go to the subdivision development review committee, and Environmental Health has seen the application. It's my understanding in floodplains, Environmental Health requires a different system than a typical leach line system. They require a dry well system.
Okay.
But they did see it, and they conditioned the project assuming that septic and water would prove out.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tetley usually always has all the issues organized well for us, and the comprehensive plan consistency portion of the staff report is one of them, but I, my problem with this project has to do with the standard by which we measure agricultural viability. The very first requirement which, against which you're measuring consistency is the agricultural land use element, and it says, Mr. Tetley, agriculture should be preserved and protected as one of the primary economic bases of the valley. Is that part of the existing San Ynez community plan policy, or what's the derivation of that statement?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, that language comes from the existing land use element, area goals, which are, the text actually comes from the land use element, and the different areas of the county have different goals that are stated for the areas, and so that particular language comes from that, that document. And then, of course, on the environmental side, we have our environmental thresholds that guide how we analyze impacts to agriculture. But as far as policy, that statement comes from the land use element, and of course, we also look at the agricultural element for guidance as well.
Well, it, what strikes me about that simple statement, true as it might be, is that it ties to the economic basis of agriculture. And yet, when we analyze projects which involve the conversion of agriculture to other uses, we're often concerned with the open space nature of agriculture and how it preserves quality of life and, you know, prevents increasing urbanization in our rural areas, and yet, this project is doing that, but that policy's not raised. We stop our agricultural analysis, it appears to me, with whether it's viable for growing crops. And I wonder why it isn't analyzed in terms of open pasture, horse grazing, which can be done alone or in conjunction with other parcels. So I don't know if you have a response to that, but it seems to be a missing element and, and for me, a core element of the project.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, I do agree it's quite a gray area, the economic facet of agriculture. We, we address it, but in our analysis, we don't completely address it because we're really focused on the suitability and productivity of a particular parcel, a legal lot to provide for agriculture. We do not, you know, go as far as to say, well, if we have an 11-acre parcel and it happens to be then planted all in vineyards, suddenly it's viable. Because that's an economic aspect that could happen. We do look at the historic pattern of agriculture on the site and the actual resources, the soils, availability of water for its overall agricultural suitability and in general. And in this particular case, we do have prime soils, but the, the size of the parent parcel just restricts it from being an independent operation, and due to the lack of any history of interest in cultivating the property, that was the guiding force before our analysis. It does not address completely the issue of the economics underlying agricultural use in the general area.
Is it not the case, Mr. Tetley, though, that really we could look at any relatively small parcel in the valley that has been used historically just for horse pasture or light grazing and say it's not agriculturally viable under our standard, therefore, it's subject to subdivision?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to answer that question, and I want to explain something that may not be completely obvious to the commission. Brian is not the planner on this case, and I think a couple of us had discussed the fact that Ms. Weber is not able to be at the hearing today. She's injured herself. So he's picking up a project that another planner prepared for your commission. And so that's by way of explanation as to why I'm not allowing Brian to answer this question, because I think it's a bit, he's falling, it's difficult for him. With respect to whether or not our thresholds find that all small agricultural parcels are not viable in the San Ynez Valley that aren't used agriculturally, not necessarily. If you look at the criteria, some of them are based upon historic use and surrounding uses of the property, but others are based upon water availability, soil characteristics, et cetera. So we have found parcels even 10 and 5 acres to be a viable parcel that could be interrupted by some change in use or subdivision of the property in the past. It's just this one seems to fall short of that initial threshold evaluation, and the base parcel was determined not to, not to represent a viable resource. So it's an operation of the thresholds and the various criteria that we use.
My, what I put in the form of a question, Mr. Tetley, not trying to pin him down, but I think to stimulate a discussion, is that I, I think we need to look at these standards. If we're going to be allowing subdivisions of all small parcels that haven't been historically used for row crops or grapes or something else, then I think we're headed for some significant development in, in a very treasured area of our county. And I would love to hear the comments of Commissioner Jackson, this being his last meeting. I know he's, he feels these things deeply, and... and if he thinks I'm on the wrong track, I'd be interested in hearing that.
Well, first of all, I'll... The topicality of ag viability as a defining principle is subject to, I would say, considerable debate in the community. As part of the community plan process, it was a component of the valley blueprint process. It has been significant. The ag community in the valley took umbrage with the base definitions that the county were using for ag viability, particularly as it alluded to livestock or as it alluded to row crops, and a significant element of charging the ag committee that has developed... This is still a subject, it's a hot-button item. It's particularly hot where there is an urban, inter-rural interface, that is, that's the... Where we have seen the most passionate discussion, if you will, and also in certain key vistas where the community sees them as, in the valley blueprint, they were called sacred cows, and the other area, they were called treasured vistas, et cetera. And so, there are pockets and areas that are of greater significance in the minds of the community, elicited a greater amount of debate than perhaps right here. If you step back and take a look at the adjacent area, there's a lot of fighting for reducing the amount of parcels that can go to Ag 1.5. There's a lot of concern and probably antipathy toward an overabundance of Ag 1.5s, and so there is considerable discussion, and I think there will be considerable discussion if and when the community plan goes forward on that very issue. In looking at the site, personally, I don't recall this as being one that was a component of that discussion tremendously. And I think if you look at the surrounding neighborhood and the commonality of not only the Ag 1.5, but the way the Ag 1.5 is utilized in this immediate community, it's not a significant differential. Go over to Ballard, however, where you do have several Ag 1.10s and 1.20s where people have an interest in that, and you will find a far greater concern because of the higher densities associated with it. So, you're on the right track, it is an issue of significance. I did not come away with this site being a beachhead for it, and I went through an awful lot of those hearings myself. You are right, I don't think the valley is satisfied with the county's definition of viable ag, period. And that can be from either sides of the spectrum, so that debate is coming, and perhaps when we get to public comment, there might be some on that. So, I guess in answer to your question, yeah, you're right, yeah, it's a little lean in the discussion here. When I looked at it, however, it was not one of those sites that was actively fought and seemed to be compatible with the existing utility. That being said, Commissioner Brown?
I just have a question for you, Commissioner Jackson, and how you viewed this parcel and your discussion of it. You, I would take it that you felt that it was really based not on anything to do with sort of the ag viability and what could be grown there, what could be produced there? It was more how it sort of fit into the surrounding properties and what was already there in terms of sort of development?
Well, to an extent, you are somewhat impacted by the history of the site as it has been used, and it has not been used in a significant ag context for its prime soil characteristics. It has been used in what I might call boutique ag, and that is what you'll see as you drive up and down baseline. You'll see boutique ag, you'll see some folks doing some rather significant orchard things as you go, a lot of horse activities, things like that. I think there's even a llama, Mr. Field can correct me on that, I think there's a llama, an alpaca operation. So, there is a boutique, it was the relationship of the prime soils to the agricultural utility that I don't think you're seeing a great deal of in that size range in that immediate area. Now, you go behind it to the larger, and that prospect is available, and so that's, in weighing it, that was what I was looking at. Okay. At this point, does the applicant have a presentation?
Good morning, I guess still, Mr. Chair and planning commissioners. My name is Brett Jones, agent for Mr. and Mrs. Tom Stoll, the property owners, and I just want to also thank Ms. Weber for her pushing forward the project and wish her a speedy recovery, and also would like to thank Mr. Tetley for taking over in such short notice. And just wanted to address just a couple of things that were brought up. I don't have a presentation, but just a couple of things before we get to the ag viability. We did do an extended phase one, and just for your edification, it may be helpful for your earlier conversation, and what we did was actually had a county-approved archaeologist on site, had a backhoe operator, and we dug 14 trenches on-site, approximately six-foot deep by 40-foot-long subsurface trenches, so there was, essentially the whole site was opened up, and nothing was found. Septic systems, I did go to S D R C subdivision review committee in front of Paul Jensen, the Environmental Health Coordinator for land use issues, and we will be resigned to a leach line system, not a dry well, which is closer to the surface, but there were no more conditions put on because we're in the floodplain.
And if I may just ask, you're not restricted in where you could put it other than above the restrictions that are already here?
That's right.
Okay.
That's correct. And frankly, I'm not sure how to address the ag viability, that's come up on a few of my projects in the past. We've always gone through the threshold checklist, and in fact, previously on another lots split, there were discussions that there were maybe thresholds in terms of total numbers of acreage, I don't know, and when you split from 10 to a 5, does it make it less viable? I have, frankly, clients that do ag viability work on 5-acre parcels, they have boutique vineyards, they have, you know, a llama ranch, horse ranches, there is some ag happening on 5-acre parcels as well, so I'm not sure exactly how to address that concern.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, at this point, we'll go for public comment. I have one speaker slip. Anybody else make a mad dash for Commissioner Brown and give her a slip? Otherwise, Mr. Field, you're on.
Good morning. My name's Bob Field, I live in San Diego. I had no intention to speak to this, so I'm trying to, from my notes here, from some of the comments that have been made. I live in that neighborhood at the end of Baseline Avenue. I am on the board and the president of a mutual water company that has one well 50 feet from Santa Agüita Creek, and I was the former chairman of the VPAC that worked on the community plan, so let me see if in three minutes I can switch the hats around. There's little or no objection from the neighborhood about this subdivision. The parcels, so for those of you who were there, note that to the west, there's a 40, 50, 60-foot rise, so it's not a terribly visible site from the neighborhood, and so there's been little, some, but very little concern expressed, and nobody here. As a director of the water company, we, of course, are nervous about any waste disposal that near the creek. The county has the standards, the leach field is the way to go. I guess the reason for that is the dry well just injects this into the aquifer or closer to it routinely, whereas the leach field is a rare event, we hope. Nervous-making, but we're not objecting to that, and we would be the most affected water users, domestic water. The third thing on, as far as the community plan goes, I'd want to confirm what Mr. Jackson said. There were parcels and areas that were flagged as far more sensitive than others, this is not one. So I think that sensitivity is not something that you need to spend a lot of time on, but I do want to support on the broader sense what Commissioner Cooney was saying. I don't see how anybody can argue that subdividing ag land doesn't somehow affect its viability and productivity for agriculture. It's just intuitively obvious that the more you chop ag land up, the less potential it has for agriculture. And clearly, other nations who have more history than we, Europe and Japan, have dealt with this issue because they'd be all subdivided down to quarter-acre lots after the thousands of years that civilizations have lived there. So I do want to say on the general point that Commissioner Cooney raised, that I'm in full support, that the county's decision-making process on this very subjective, squishy, contentious issue of subdividing ag land, I think, is worthy of another look, but I don't believe that, personally, that this case rises to the level that it is a big concern. So, I guess I just supported the project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Not seeing another mad dash to the public comment. Ben, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any further questions for staff? Any issues? Okay, this is a third district issue. I had planned, having reviewed it, to support it, but now I've got somebody I can blame. So, either way, I would like to make a motion that we approve the project and accept the staff recommendations as embodied in the staff report by adopting the findings for attachment A of the report, approve the negative declaration, attachment B, and the monitoring program with, I never can get Commissioner Valencia's string talk down, and approve the project subject conditions included in attachment C. So moved.
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any additional discussion? Before I put it to a vote, I would like to thank Mr. Field for the contribution and Commissioner Cooney for the question, because if you don't know it by now, that's about as hot as it gets in the valley, and you will see it going forward. Therefore, Commissioner Cooney, you have...
Just one comment. Mr. Chair, you said in explaining the current situation in the valley, and of course, we do have a pending amendment to the valley plan that we're looking forward to reviewing, and we hope you'll be a part of that process to continue to influence us. You said this particular property, though, did not appear to you to be a beachhead, and while that may be true, I look at it as a canary in the mine, and I do think we're seeing an ebbing away of our open space in the valley. Personally, I looked over that cliff that Mr. Field mentioned and saw an extremely bucolic environment, and then I imagined a couple of Montecito-type mansions out in the open field, and really, I wonder if that's what the residents of the valley are aiming for. So that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think we're ready, Ms. Opeland?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
No.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries four to one.
Okay. At this juncture, we have the next item coming up, which I'm looking for a protocol to... We don't read it into the record first, I think.
Mr. Chair, we will read it into the record, but I think if you want to make the statement you want to make beforehand, that would be fine.
I will be recusing myself on the next item. I applied the same ethical calculus that I have done for the last year and a half. I arrived at this decision in November after discussion with staff, and I contacted Vice-Chair Blau on the 21st to apprise him of my decision to do this, and I just lay that out because there has been some commentary about the decision, and that's all I'll say about it, except to say that I will be recusing on this item.
Just, I will confirm, Commissioner, or Chair did contact me on that date and did recuse himself way back then.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, or Mr. Vice-Chair, as the case may be, I will just repeat the statement I've made at each hearing of this matter, that due to a relationship with predecessor to the current developer, I am also recusing myself.
Okay.
And before Commissioner Jackson leaves, I'm not sure that we get to see you back here, so I just want to tell you that it has been a pleasure to serve you, and we threw you in as chair, and you've done an admirable job of managing us, us, this unruly gang that we are up here. So, with great appreciation for your representing your district and presenting a very articulate face of this commission, you've done an admirable job, and a heartfelt thanks for all you've done, and I, as Ms. Black says, we hope to see you at the other side of the podium, under three minutes, with your cellphone off, because I think you do provide a lot of valuable insight and experience into the valley, and I think that's important for any future commission to hear. So, many thanks for all your contributions, and happy holidays to you.
Well, thank you very much for that, and the same to you.
Yeah, I want to echo those comments, it's been a pleasure to be a fellow commissioner with you, and I wish you well, hope to see you back someday, maybe.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia?
Well, Commissioner Cooney?
I would just add one point. CJ, and sitting next to you during the past year, as you have chaired the commission, I think you've been extremely receptive and tolerant of my suggestions as to protocol and other matters, and I appreciate that. I, like Commissioner Brown, feel you've done a terrific job with very little preparation and have managed to get it right almost all of the time, and I hope you look forward, in whatever your endeavors are, to the opportunity you had to serve the county in this capacity because I think you've done so admirably.
Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, you came in as a rookie and you're leaving as a grand master, as our chairman. You did an outstanding job. Thank you for all your comments, and thank you for the class that you showed all the people and the courtesy, and you're very good in protocol, and I appreciate all that. We're going to miss you and wish you the best, and I'm sure we'll see you around the community.
Well, as they say, old planning commissioners never die, they just zone out. Couldn't pass that one up, but, and thank you for indulging that streak in me over the last year and a half, and I thank all of you also, but I also wish to thank Ms. Black for professionalism and that she pass on my hearty thanks to her team. I'm most grateful, from the last board meeting, that people stood up and acknowledged the fact that we are blessed in this county with a staff that put together a professionally-rendered, polished, and hard-fought product, and they need to, I think our public needs to see that, hear that, and know that. So, thank you very much, I'll see you all, have a happy holiday.
We all just want to complete the item. Great. So Jessica, if you'll read it into the record, please.
The following is the hearing on the request of Mr. Eric Fasquoz, agent for Ken Hunter, property owner and applicant, for initiation of a general plan amendment 08 GPA 2, application filed on February 6, 2008, which would include a change in land use designation from agriculture to resort visitor-serving commercial, and amendments to the text of land use element to allow development of the Hunter Law Parisma Resort in the rural area of the county.
And Mr. Edie, you have a staff report for us.
Thank you, Chairman Blau. Before I start my presentation, I'd just like to explain that from a staff perspective, felt it was valuable that this presentation primarily focuses on just new information that staff prepared for the PC since their last hearing. I have a number of slides and graphics that date back to previous hearings on the project, so for purposes of the dialogue, if you feel that we need to backtrack at any point in time, just let me know.
Just the new stuff, thank you.
Okay, continuing on with today's project, once again, we'll be hearing the Hunter Law Parisma Resort General Plan Amendment. For some project background, the commission considered initiation of the Law Parisma General Plan Amendment on November 12, 2008. The commission continued the project and requested a more detailed analysis of project options as it was possible. At the previous hearing, staff presented four major options. These included admitting land use definitions, two various overlays or the expansion of existing... existing conditional use permits. Additionally, since the continuance that the planning commission requested, staff has prepared a new fifth option, which provides some minimal analysis of what we could expect if we allowed resort development in conjunction with existing golf courses regardless of their location throughout the county. So as Option 1, which was previously presented to the commission, was to simply amend the current land use element definitions for the rural area to allow resort visitor-serving commercial development, and also to, if necessary, amend the land use definition for resort visitor-serving commercial in a manner that would allow residential or timeshare fractional type uses. Very little additional analysis of this option is possible at this time. These aforementioned changes would allow virtually any property owner in the county's rural area to request a change in land use to resort visitor-serving commercial. However, the vast majority of those requests would likely be denied unless their parcel had the necessary site characteristics to support a resort like that. In that vein, it could be reasonably assumed that the 47 parcels that staff identified as the, having the basic characteristics to support development of this size being proximity to highway, that sort of thing, would be a good starting point. It could be assumed that if we were just to amend the land use element definitions, that at the very least, we'd be looking at those same parcels as being considered for that type of development. As far as Option 2 was concerned, that was the rural resort visitor-serving overlay. In the previous presentation by staff, we identified six different characteristics that we felt were an appropriate starting point for defining parcels throughout the county where we could entertain this type of development. This is the map that you saw at the last hearing. All these 47 parcels have been highlighted in red. They span pretty much the gamut, all the way from the Gaviota coast to the very northern edge of the county. However, the one missing element from staff's prior presentation was, these were your 47 parcels that had concrete site characteristics already identified, such as, like I mentioned, minimum parcel size, appropriate zoning. What variable wasn't defined was what significant recreational amenity these parcels could provide, and that would be the last characteristic that they would have to meet. Staff did a significant amount of analysis, looking at those 47 parcels and working out an assumption as to which of these parcels do already contain an arguable recreational amenity. Starting with golf courses seemed appropriate since the project site that we are entertaining has a golf course. So in that vein, the La Parisma Golf Course Resort contains three parcels. One parcel, the Rancho San Marcos Golf Club, was also included in the overlay before. We also felt it was valuable to look at parcels that are adjacent to existing golf course properties, because these parcels can be combined with the existing properties through voluntary lot mergers that staff has very little review of. And in that respect, you get four additional parcels, one from Rancho Maria, two parcels adjacent to La Parisma Golf Resort, and one parcel adjacent to Sandpiper Golf Resort, which is actually incorporated in the city of Golita. In addition to golf courses, we had nine parcels located on various points of the Gaviota coast, which all have fairly easy coastal access. We have three parcels that are directly adjacent to Los Padres National Forest, two of which already have established trail systems. We have two additional parcels that are adjacent to the La Parisma Mission property, also have access to established trail systems there, and we have one parcel that is adjacent or in close proximity to Lake Kachuma and could offer some boating and water recreational activities. It should be noticed that some parcels are counted twice. In other words, the single parcel from Rancho San Marcos actually qualifies as a golf course property as adjacent to Lake Kachuma and proximity to Los Padres National Forest. Moving on to Option 3, this was the wine tourism support overlay. As part of staff's first presentation, this was the option, which most succinctly narrowed it down to a starting point of 11 parcels. Very few planning commissioners showed any interest in pursuing this option. This was the map that we came up with, again, with the 11 parcels shown. Basically, you have, I believe, five parcels in the Santa Rita Hills area, another one parcel up in the Santa Maria Valley, and the remainder of the parcels in different areas of San Inez and Buellton area. Moving on to the expanded use of CUPs. This option did seem some, see some interest from the commission. However, much like Option 1, this is a very difficult option to expand upon, simply because until we receive applications, it's hard to define which ones that we could entertain under this option. However, at the very least, it's worth considering what the existing findings are for CUP applications. They do have some protection as far as adverse impacts on agriculture, rural character, scenic view sheds, so even without adding an additional CUP mechanism, even using our particular findings, we already have an effect, there are some minimal protections bestowed upon the county if we go through that option. Moving on to finally Option 5, this was the new option not previously heard by the commission. This is simply looking at all the properties in the county that already contain an existing golf course and see whether or not they're appropriate for development regardless of whether or not they're close to a highway, that sort of thing. In that respect, the county currently contains 10 existing golf courses, which total approximately 2,022 acres. This table shows all of these aforementioned golf courses and a lot of pertinent information to the discussion, including their acreage per golf course, their zoning, whether or not they're currently designated as rural, urban, or both in some instances, and whether or not they have any proximity to urban areas or EDRNs. So the five golf courses shown in black are already located in the urban area, and it's important to note that as far as our discussion today, golf course properties located in the urban area could already come in and request for a resort visitor-serving commercial operation, and there wouldn't be a need for a significant change to the general plan. In fact, some of the golf courses, like Ocean Meadows and Burnham Wood, already contain zoning and development, similar to what we would be entertaining for the Hunter Course. The golf courses reflected in red at the top are all either located in the rural area or at least partially in the rural area, and these are where the significant change would occur if we were to entertain this option. Ultimately, these courses contain about 900 acres of land that's potentially zoned for agriculture, although in some cases, that acreage could, I guess, expand rapidly, as I mentioned previous, voluntary lot mergers can always be pursued for these project sites, and there's very little oversight from staff at a discretionary level to prevent those. In concluding analysis, ultimately, after considering several options by which the requested resort development could be allowed, it is likely that the approval of any of the options would result in a significant change to the county's rural land use pattern. This change in land use pattern would allow the further expansion of urban uses into rural areas and could either directly displace agriculture or create additional conflicts between urban and agricultural operations. Therefore, creating a path for approval of resorts in the rural area of the county would be inconsistent with several agricultural element policies which are intended to foster the continued success of agriculture in Santa Barbara County. Additionally, the land use element already has provisions for small-scale visitor-serving uses in the rural area, such as bed and breakfasts and guest ranches, as long as these uses are subordinate to the rural character of the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the request to initiate the general plan amendment. I conclude staff's presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions of staff? In that case, I have two public speakers that want to make comment. First one is Freddie Romero, followed by Mike Lunsford at a Santa Barbara.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm not here to oppose or to, or in favor of the project. I'm here just to restate our case where, what I restated at the original conceptual hearing, that we do have concerns in regards to the archaeology that's on the golf course at this time, and to restate our position to work with the developer, should this be approved, and that it would be part of the requirement for the development, that we offer any help they would like in regards to the preservation of the cultural material that is located within the golf course or within its development project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Romero. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead. Commissioner Valencia has a question for you, Mr. Romero.
Did you do an analysis or have a review when the golf course was made? Didn't you do that already once?
No. Well, there was, there was survey work that was done. I did read a summary report of what was discovered. There are, there are areas within the golf course right now that are designated as sensitive areas, as well as, you know, there's actual Ts out there are where archaeological material is located.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so we do know that there are archaeological material there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Lunsford.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Mike Lunsford, representing the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. We're very concerned about the potential of this particular project and would do support the staff memo. And for, there's four elements that we believe emerge out of the staff element for your concern. One is the conclusion that there can be significant changes to rural land uses if this resort is approved, and that's countywide, and that the precedent-setting import of this project means that we can't approve this resort without allowing further expansion of urban uses on rural lands, and that the project could displace and create conflicts with ag operations and would be inconsistent with several ag element policies. This project is not dissimilar to one that was proposed shortly after, in 1996, shortly after the commission began looking into ways to maintain these large ranches throughout the county to create additional income and so forth. And as soon as that request went to staff, shortly thereafter, the Las Varas Ranch owners on the Gaviota coast submitted a plan that looks very similar to this, what was a golf course, resort, and housing with a general store. So there's very little doubt that there is this incentive lurking out there for properties on the Gaviota coast. Now, in our attempts to protect this locally cherished landscape, we look to a variety of sources. One of those is the Pew Oceans Commission Report on Coastal Resources, and they report that the leading cause of species decline in California is urban sprawl that would be induced by this project. They go on to say, "The patterns of land use, how we manage our land use, amplify the effects of our increasing population on coastal ecosystems. The coastal population in America is five times the national average and increasing. The rate of development is twice that of population growth, indicating a continuing trend of urban sprawl." Now, of course, remote development in rural areas will, and I think we haven't really focused on this enough, will increase the transportation emissions at a time when we just can't afford it. And in the final analysis, the Pew Oceans Commission recommends that zoning in various municipal local jurisdictions promote compact growth with urban growth boundaries to protect ag and environmental resources. You have a letter that I submitted on behalf of the conservancy. We view this as potentially a massive change countywide in how we treat our rural lands for the purpose of approving this one project, and I would urge you to put a significant weight on what the implications are to the county, countywide, on the urban lands, and particularly on the Gaviota coast. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I ask the applicant if he wishes to speak, don't ask for experte communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I had discussions with Mr. Eric Voskas, planner for Hunter Resorts.
Same.
And I also had a conversation, Mr. Voskas.
In addition, Mr. Chair.
Since the last meeting, I'm just, since the last meeting, we made discussions last time.
Because of the review, again, I, it'd been a couple of months since I'd been, so I went up Sabata and around Tulare Rosa and viewed the site again.
Okay, great. Thank you. So does the applicant wish to address the commission?
I guess, just keep it short. Just wish to reiterate, as all as we're looking for is the opportunity to demonstrate that there is local community support from those most affected, as well as the surrounding local community, and also that, given the opportunity to demonstrate that there'll be net public benefits associated with this project. Certainly, the issue of precedent is probably an issue that should go before the Board of Supervisors for, you know, discussion, and we would be very comfortable with that.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I just wanted to key off on your last statement there. I think we've heard from staff and we hear from the public that this, whatever is done here, if it goes forward, is basically a sea change for the county in terms of looking at their rural areas. And because there's many policy considerations that this project would affect, you've indicated that you would like to hear from the board, I take that's your comment before you, in order to get an understanding of whether or not it might be worthwhile for you to proceed. I guess, would you sort of weigh in on that?
Right. I think, you know, given it's, you know, the issues at hand, I think they're, you know, just to a considerable degree, you know, what to be decided, I guess, at the board level. That had to do with the, I think this issue of precedent is in everybody's mind, and so I think that need to be aired out, and I don't know if the planning commission is the proper forum for that.
Right, the right venue to do that. Okay, great.
That's my feeling on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Lunsford, did you want to start, or how should we proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this is in the fourth district, I believe, and I just wanted to say that in the past, we thought it was a good project in the community to go forward with this project. We realize it requires a general plan amendment, and we realize that it is, this is a big hurdle to pass, so, but in light of that, just want to say that the city of Lompoc, the city council voted in favor and supports this project. In addition to that, the Chamber of Commerce supports this project. Our Chamber of Commerce has several hundred people in the community, and it includes the third and fourth district because it's a commingled organization there that includes the city of Lompoc, out, people out towards 246, Tulare Rosa Road, Sabata Canyon, Mission Hills, and Vandenberg Village. Includes all those people, and all those people have, and the chamber have supported this project. The Rotary Club, Rotary Club has about 30-some leaders in it, and they had a big discussion on it, had a presentation, and they support this project. Colab, which has about 1,300 members, I believe, last time I heard, they support this project. So I just want to say that there are, and I've also received letters opposed to the project, but in the majority, the letters that came in opposing the project were outside the community. All these projects, all these organizations that I've indicated are within the community of Lompoc Valley, and they are all in support of this project. Looking into that, I know that here, we're going to have probably three different views, and we're going to have to make a decision, so probably, one of us is probably going to have to modify our views to see this project move forward, if it's to move forward. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I have, as I've explained, discussed in the last meeting, I have lots of thoughts on what Mr. Hunter is trying to do, and I guess my overarching consideration here is because the policies that will, or that are to be affected here are huge, and I don't believe that this commission should be making these decisions.
believe that this commission should be making these decisions. I think that we need to get a reading from the board of what their intentions are. If they want to go forward with this, with this kind of project, in whatever shape or form, or how, whatever zoning might accommodate this, I think they need to wrestle with the issues and the impacts. I don't think we should be doing it here. I think they should take that on, and then whatever they decide can come back, or we can hear what the results of that deliberation are. And this would also serve Mr. Hunter well, because if the board says, hey, we don't like it, period, then he's not going to initiate an application. Well, he might, but one thing I don't want to do is, I don't want to send him down a path where he's going to spend lots of money, and with, with the Niles, various decision-making bodies. That's one of my great concerns, but I don't think that whatever we do here, I don't think we should initiate this application without direction from the board. The changes are just too huge. Now, Commissioner Valencia talks about the city of Lompoc and organizations within the city of Lompoc. You know, this, this project will affect them, but it also affects county and county policies, and other areas within the county. No matter what's decided, I think, as Mr. Edie pointed out, there will be repercussions on other areas within the county, and I think we have to, to, to consider that. It's just not a one-way street. And certainly, once the mouse gets out of the bag and starts nibbling on the cheese, you know, the whole, the whole cookie cabinet goes. So I think that we must tread very lightly. I think it's important that we get some guidance from the board so we understand what their intentions are. They may love it, they may say, "Go forward." In that case, I think it's a whole different arena in which we would operate, but until we have that guidance, I just don't think that we should initiate the application. So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Valencia, that, that would be my direction, is let's send it to the board with the work that Mr. Edie has done. He's done a lot of work, he's given a lot of thought, there's a lot of needy material in there. I wouldn't think that he probably would need to do much additional work. There may be some other considerations the, the commission may wish to add on to what he's done to help them do some deliberations, but that's kind of where I, that's my preference.
Okay. Well, for me, I have to agree with both of you. In looking at the project in and of itself, I think it has the potential to be a terrific project. As we discussed in our last meeting, the best estimate we have is it generates something around $3 million a year for the county, and that doesn't take into consideration the revenue it would generate for the city or for surrounding businesses. My problem, to tell you the truth, today is the fact that I'm no egg expert. I played Mr. Hunter's golf course, and it doesn't look to me to be a viable egg parcel of ground, but I'm no expert. And what we haven't heard from is the Ag Commission Committee, or anybody in that area, to tell us that it is or is not, or that it would adversely affect the surrounding properties. I have to agree that, I know, talking to Supervisor Centeno, he's not going to support a project that would endanger the Gaviota Coast or other areas of Lompoc, and if this truly is precedent-setting, and his concern has to do with the Fourteenth Amendment, equal rights provision, then I, I don't know that we could support the project. But if county council could come back and tell me that by approving this project, we are not creating a situation where a landowner someplace in the county could sue the county and obtain the same rights to build a hotel and a, other such amenities, that's going to be difficult to support changing this one. Yet by the same token, they come back and say, "No," that simply approving this project based on the way we make the approval is not going to set a precedent that where we, where we can deny those kind of projects in other areas, they don't have a problem with it. What I'm going to propose is that we continue this item for a sufficient amount of time so the county council can give us a thorough briefing and understanding of how the precedent might work to our disadvantage, if that's the case, or how we can do it so it doesn't operate to our disadvantage. And I also want to hear from the Ag Commission and the Ag community as to whether or not this is viable or not. One of the concerns I have about our current zoning is, it seems to me in a lot of cases, when we have large parcels of ground that are not anywhere close to an urban area, we just designate them ag, because it's the least intrusive kind of zoning getting put on there. And I don't think we've actually ever taken a look at, at some of those parcels and made the determination that even though it's out there and it's, I mean, I know there's areas near Santa Maria where we say jackrabbits have to pack a lunch to eat. That's not a good ag area, you can't even graze cattle on there. So, and I know some of those are zoned ag, and they probably shouldn't be, they're not really a viable ag operation. So I'd like to have the staff come back to us with those two issues, so we can fully vent them. If there's a way to approve this project that doesn't harm the rest of the county in unwanted development, that I'm in favor of. I will point out to you that all the letters I've received, you know, opposite the project, have to do with this issue of not charisma, and the viable, or the, the benefits of that project, the detriments, it has to do with what might happen someplace else to county. So for me, that's the issue. If there's a way to get this approved, to make Lompoc happy, to make the Lompoc community happy, I'd like to see it have a chance. But I know it has no chance of being approved if, if indeed, it's going to adversely affect agriculture in the rest of the county. So, Mr. Commissioner Valencia, I'm going to ask you to do the continuance.
Mr. Chair, before you go to Commissioner Valencia, I just would like to have some comments to your thinking.
Sure. Mr. Brown?
I, I think that we've heard one of the issues, and you're, you're right, it is about sort of what, the opening of this store and what this project might allow in other parcels. And as we look at the rural areas throughout the county, it's not, in, in my opinion, it's, they're rural because we don't want urban uses on them, and it's this issue of sprawl, it's extending the urban boundaries. What we're trying to do, and what we're probably going to hear from the board next week when they look at the AB 32 greenhouse gas considerations, is that we're trying to contain development in the urban areas where the infrastructure. And what this project would do, if it's allowed to go forward, it's an urban use in an rural ag area, so it intensifies those uses, and it creates the sprawl that we're all trying to avoid under AB 32. Now, with that being said, what I'm, what I don't hear from you in getting this information from county council is that there, there are legal implications, but there are also other land use considerations, and I, I, I don't think that you didn't want to consider those, but I did, what I didn't hear from you is the importance of getting some overarching reading from the board about whether or not this should, this project should proceed, notwithstanding what other additional information we might get from county council.
Well, I, I guess I could, I mean, I don't disclose expertes when they're with, with our own supervisor, but this kind of came from a, a long meeting with Supervisor Centeno, and that he's telling me that he's not going to support the project if it's going to create the development in, say, on the Gaviota Coast, or in solving the unwanted. I think the real difference here is, is that the neighborhood, the city of Lompoc, the people that are, that's running this project, want this project. It is adjacent to an EDRN. I did see that on the, on your screen earlier, whereas no other golf course is adjacent to an EDRN. That's kind of like, yes, it may be a little bit of urban sprawl, but I kind of believe that Lompoc wants to be a little larger, wants to take this into consideration, because it's important to them for, for their city to operate. I mean, one of the examples we saw, I believe, in the Rotary Letter talked about, this is now going to give them somewhat of an upper-class place to have dinners and other functions that they don't have now. So you have all that in Santa Barbara, we have that in Santa Maria, they don't have that in Lompoc. But I'm moved by the fact that the people that are adjacent to the project want the project to go through. I'm also moved by the fact that the people in Galita and in Solvay don't want to see a similar project in their area. If there's a way to accomplish those two goals, I think we did our job, and I think it's important for us to develop the information before we make a recommendation to the board, because I think the board is looking for us to make a recommendation. And then they can, they can act on a recommendation, and we will have better information for them when we send it up to them.
Well, okay, let me just, I want to get something clear here, and Ms. Black can help me. If this commission were to initiate this application, it doesn't, the next path is it goes back to staff for processing. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, that's the normal course.
Right.
It is an appealable action, so if somebody were to appeal it to the board, they could. Your board, or your commission could alternatively make a recommendation to the board, you could forward it to the board.
Okay.
I've seen you do that before as well.
Right, okay. And I'm pretty loose.
Which is what I would contend that we would do.
Okay.
I would contend that we would make the recommendation with some additional information to the board for, for their consideration.
Okay.
I just think that's doing our job as best we can.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could we hear from Mr. Voskas, please? Chair, Mr. Voskas, go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, I, I'm wondering if there might be a, a way that we can solve both of your concerns at the same time, kill two birds with one stone, is, as you, as you do, Chair Blau, we would like to have weigh-in from the Ag Commission, as well as county council on this as well. But I think that's something that we can do on our way to the board. We're not going to be in front of the board for several months, and it could be addressed between today and, and the board hearing, perhaps.
I, I did think about that, to tell you the truth, and the reason I don't want to do it that way is that we have, at the moment, five options as to how this might proceed. And I think for, at least for this commissioner, I need to get the information from the staff that I've requested, then I want to figure out which of the five options, or a sixth option, as to how we're going to proceed, because it's, it's not just a matter of, "Boy, do you want to do charisma or not?" I think we also have to take the time to figure out what the process would be in order to, to do your initiation. Whether we're, I, I mean, could any, Nathan had put five options for us, and I'm not sure that any of the five are perfect, but I think with another meeting, a little bit of time, we could figure out one that we might be able to live with. So that's my concern. And I'm not asking for a, a long continuance. I realize there's the, there's the staff holiday that's coming forward, but it's a matter of when we think we can get through the Ag Commission, and when we think we can get the legal staff to give us, to give us a determination on the Fourteenth Amendment issues. I can't see the lights, Joe, so you can, until I get used to it, just speak up, okay?
Mr. Chair, you want me to speak as to when this might be able to come back to the commission, if, if that's where the commission decided to go?
That could be great.
I don't think it could be any earlier than your meeting in February, and I'm hesitant to say we could definitely meet the meeting in February, because I don't know when the Ag Advisory Committee is going to meet, in January. Typically, they meet the first, I think it's the first Wednesday of the month, and I just don't know if they're going to meet that first Wednesday in, in January. So it may be the first.
In February.
Meeting in February. I just don't know.
Well, let's put it this way, in fairness to Mr. Hunter and his group, I would like to go ahead and, and propose that we continue it to that date.
February 11th.
And if for some reason, they're not ready yet, we'll have to continue it again, but let's make an effort to try and get it done by February the 11th. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, we wanted to see this project go forward because we have an economic problem in Lompoc. We had Ford Garage go under, which employed about 40 or 50 people. We had the Chrysler Garage go under, which employed another 50 people. We had Mervin's closed. This is all within the last six, eight months. We had the Big Lots closed, and now we hear there's four or five other stores that are closing, major stores. I mean, there is a major impact in our community, and we need to, whatever we can do to bring money back in, expendable income is, is necessary. And I realize that, you know, I realize that this EDRN is a very special, but, you know, I remember many years back, we couldn't eat meat on Fridays, because it was a sin. But now, the people that were in charge, the High Pope and whoever it was, said, "It's not a sin anymore, you can eat meat," you know, and the same thing for these rules and these lines, they can be changed. There's a reason for it, and you, people do, make those changes. Now, I realize that Supervisor Centeno would be a critical vote on this situation, and I realize that the, the makeup of the board of supervisors has changed, and so two north county supervisors have to be hand in hand, and so that's why I said that one of us is going to have to give in. My preference would be to send this to the board of supervisors, but if I did that, if I went along with Commissioner Brown, Commissioners, I mean Supervisor Centeno, as you indicated, would be opposed to this project, because he wants to see the advisory group, the Ag Advisory Group, look at this again. So somehow or another, I'm going to have to go with one or the other, and I'd like to see a more positive thing than a negative thing. I'd rather go with Supervisor Centeno having a, a positive look on this aspect. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to side with you that we send this to the Ag Advisory Group for additional comments, so they can come back to the planning commission, and then we can make a presentation, a proposal.
Mr. Brown?
Okay. Great. And, and just a final comment. It's my best estimate that this has no chance to go forward positively if we were to send it up there today, but I think if we, if we are able to figure out a way to allow this project to go forward and restrict, and not have any precedent that would adversely affect San Ynez or, or Galita, it has a chance to go forward. So that's my concern, and I, I'm going to put in the effort to try and make it happen. So based on that, if, if you'll make your motion, I'll probably second it.
With that, Mr. Chair, I move that we send this back to the Ag Advisory Committee for comments.
I think we need just to continue this.
Oh, to continue?
Yeah, to the February 11th date.
Okay, that's fine.
And staff will do the advisory in the meantime.
Oh, they'll handle that, all right. Thank you.
So then I'll second it. Ms. Hopland?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Vote carries three to zero.
Thank you. Any other business? Meeting is adjourned.
Great.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.